Regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, November 21st, 2024, and we are at the City of Reno Council Chamber. We'll begin with Agenda Item 1, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Becerra, will you please lead us? Thank you, Commissioner. We'll close Item 1 and move to Item 2. Secretary, can we get a roll call, please?
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Carrie Romeyer.
Here.
Manny Becerra.
Here.
Christina Del Viar.
Here.
J.D. Draculich, absence at this time. Alex Velto.
Here.
Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Awesome, thank you. We will close Item 2 and move to Item 3, Public Comment. This item is for public comment on any action item or any general public comment.
Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda, specifically, https://links.rino.gov/pc11-21-24. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Mornings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior, and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. We did receive correspondence on this item that was forwarded to the Planning Commission and entered into the record.
Great, thank you. I don't have any, sorry, I don't have any request-to-speak forms. Do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak?
No one has raised their hand on Zoom.
Great. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak under general public comment?
Sorry, Chair, we do have someone on Zoom who has raised their hand.
Sorry, I'm going to pull that back and defer to the Zoom attendee whenever they're ready.
Patrick, when you're ready, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, Patrick Coleman, for the record. I just wanted to comment around the planning changes. I think it's called a code cleanup of some kind with Title 18 that's been ongoing. I've read that, and I've seen other updates to Title 18. And in all the other updates that I've looked at and seen over the last decade in Reno, it's pretty clear what the rights are for existing entitlements. When I read through this one, I don't know if it's just that it concerns my business and other people's businesses, and in terms of live music and rights to grandfather entitlements for bars and restaurants, but it's unclear to me. And I think from articles in the news around if we lose those entitlements, if we sell our business, or if we stop operating for six months to do a remodel, or any other items, it's just very unclear. And I think that within planning and business license and the city and all the different entities involved, it's also unclear from their perspective, from my and others' conversations with them, as to what this new Title 18 means for people who have existing entitlements and rights. And from just anecdotally speaking to other bar and nightclub and restaurant owners, some are required to get some form of conditional or special use permit, even though they've been operating, others are not. I would just ask that, especially if this is supposed to be a cleanup, that it's defined much better, and that within the city, the enforcement is, and the, you know, function of how this is actually executed is very clear, especially between the different departments when it comes to the difference between business license code and planning code. It seems like there's a lot of confusion, even within the city departments, and definitely us as licensees and small business owners. You know, there's places that have been open 50-plus years, and people go, you need a special use permit or a conditional use permit, to the same things you've done for the last decades, and others open new, and they're told they're in different districts. I don't know that I have an opinion on it, other than it's been very confusing to a lot of different business owners and to different people within the city. The other thing I would say, when I look at the language, the, in terms of who's grant, who has an entitlement or not, there's conforming and non-conforming. If you have the entitlement already, you're conforming, but in other ways, you're non-conforming.
Sir, can you go ahead and finish your thought, please, you're over time.
The onus seems to be on the business or landowner to prove that they have the entitlement, even if they haven't ceased operations.
Sir, can you please wrap up your about 25 seconds overtime?
Yeah, no, I'm done, that's...
Thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak?
No, no one else has their hands raised.
Okay. We will bring it back to the chambers as anyone in chambers wanting to speak under general public comment at this time. Seeing none, we will close Item 3 and move to Item 4. Sorry, move to Item 4, which is Approval of Minutes. We'll start with Item 4.1, Approval of the Reno City Planning Commission, regular October 2nd, 2024, meeting minutes.
Commissioner Romeyer, motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Becerra, a second.
Looks like we got a second either way. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We will close Item 4.1 and move to Item 4.2. Approval of the Reno City Planning Commission, regular October 16th, 2024, minutes. Do you have a motion?
Commissioner Becerra, motion approved.
Commissioner Romeyer, a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. We'll now close Item 4 and move to Item 5, Public Hearings. And we'll start with Item 5.1, LDC 25-00003, 2400 West 7th Street. Looks like we will get a presentation from staff.
Hello, thank you, Chair, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Leah Picari, and I am an associate planner with the City of Reno Development Services. This evening, I am presenting an application for a major site plan review and tentative map at 2400 West 7th Street. The subject site is located just north of the I-80. It's near the intersection of Everett and 7th Street. It is a 3.72-acre site, and today's request is for two things. One, a tentative map to allow for a 28-lot, single-family residential subdivision; and two, is a major site plan review to allow for cluster development. Here you can see the zoning district of the subject parcel there in the middle of the screen. It is a single-family residential. It does allow for eight units per acre. And as you can see, the majority of the surrounding area is also that same single-family designation. Key issues that were analyzed during this request were the overall site design, compatibility with surrounding developments and uses, master plan, policy guidance, public utility infrastructure, drainage, and tree preservation. So regarding the overall site design, these lots are going to range from about 3,200 square feet to about 5,000. The average lot is going to be about 3,700 square feet. Traditionally, in the SF8, we would be looking at lot sizes of somewhere around 6,000 or 7,000 square feet, which is consistent with all the surrounding development. This site will have approximately 8,000 square feet of landscaped common open space. They are proposing four parking spaces per unit. That would be two inside of the garage and two in the driveway. It also does allow for on-street parking, but with the VACL de Sack there is wide enough to allow for that. So staff didn't see any concerns with parking on this particular case. A homeowners association or equivalent will be created to maintain all of the landscaping in these common areas. Additionally, these two areas right over here are going to be landscaped common area, and they're going to put a couple of benches in there. It will also have a landscaped parkway along 7th Street, which will increase the pedestrian safety in that area. There's also currently a bus stop out front, and that will be temporarily moved for the building and then relocated. There's been a lot of concern that that was going to be removed, and I just want to assure everybody, it's not going to be moved. The applicant has requested to waive the internal landscaped parkway, and what you see there is, on your screen, is no internal landscaped parkway. And we have asked that they attempt to save the viable pine trees, and you'll see a condition of approval in there that requires them to be checked by an arborist and determined their viability. These are pictures of some of those pine trees that are existing on the site. Again, regarding overall site design, we're looking at two-story homes with a 28-foot height. Those homes will range in square footage from about 1,800 to 2,400 square feet. These three designs that you see up here were provided in the application. However, they do not meet the ground floor interest or the standard street image features of Reno Municipal Code. So we've worked with the applicant, and they've agreed to add some windows into the garage doors to increase that ground floor interest. And then they're going to incorporate two of the following, which would be varied setbacks, varied front setbacks, enhanced landscaping in the front yard, paths to the front door, or additional structural articulation, and whichever they decide to implement here would be part of that final design. Regarding compatibility, the applicant has offered a 16- to 22-foot buffer adjacent to lots 1 through 10, and a 5-foot buffer adjacent to lot 11. We have asked that they fully landscape those rear yards along that western boundary, and you will see that there is a condition of approval in there for that. And we have asked that they apply additional design elements to the rear facades of lot 1 through 10, so that it doesn't end up just being a blank wall on the back of that home that then the people along Everett are just looking into a backyard that's devoid of anything. Also, we've limited the hours of construction, which is typical with anything that's adjacent to a residential zoning district. There's a lot of words on this screen, and this is a master plan guidance. There's basically a couple of things I want to point out here. And one is that the master plan has designated this area as single-family neighborhood. So you'll see that SF designation on some of the paperwork in your packet. Also, per the structure plan of the master plan, it's located in a central neighborhood, and 7th Street is considered a neighborhood corridor. So it has some additional policies and goals that we'd like to meet for that. So everything that you're looking for, you're looking at on the left-hand side, that's kind of in a green color there, those are all the master plan policies that this application fulfills. And everything you're looking at on the right-hand side, in the red, are ones that it doesn't fulfill. So this was a tough application to review, especially when looking at master plan policies and whether or not it conforms to our master plan. And a lot of what it doesn't conform to is that neighborhood character or the general guidelines for the neighborhood. So it's regarding parking. We'd like those to be located behind the primary structure. Garage orientation should be away from the street. We'd like to see gradual transitions between the higher-density residential developments and these neighborhood corridors. We want to see more outdoor gathering spaces, courtyards, community gardens, swimming pools, things like that. And again, transitions and the preservation of lot patterns. As you could see in that zoning map, I mean, this is consistently 6,000, 7,000 square foot. We don't see anything like this in the neighborhood. But the flip side of that is that it is currently an underused property. This, we are looking for infill in this area and redevelopment. They will provide a tree canopy. We have asked that they orient the buildings along 7th Street, towards 7th Street, which you saw in the thing that they're not, they're oriented inward, but they would be, should this be approved, with the conditions of approval. It does offer some other housing options in this area. So a lot of competing policies on this one. And then I'm going to do something that I don't normally do, which is I'm going to go through all these findings, and we have a lot of findings in this particular case. So first set of findings is going to be our general review criteria, and this is looking at consistency with the Reno master plan. And staff reviewed and analyzed all of these things, and what we've basically come up with is that it is consistent with some plans, goals, policies, and strategies, and we tried to weigh those competing policies. Is it compliant with Title 18? Yeah, it meets the minimum RMC standards. So in other words, if this came in for a building permit right now and no discretionary review was required, it would probably be approved. It does meet those. Does it mitigate the traffic impact? Yeah, they're going to put the left-turn pocket in. The project is really going to have a minimal impact on the level of service in this area. 28 homes is minimal compared to what we have in the surrounding area. And I do believe that it's going to provide a safe environment. That landscaped parkway will improve the environment for pedestrians and people on bicycles in that area. Here we have the tentative map findings. Public services and utilities are available? Yes, it's an infill project. All the services and utilities are available. Again, does it comply with the master plan, Reno Municipal Code, and Nevada Revised statutes? Kind of. It complies with some of the master plan policies. It meets the minimum RMC standards, and it does comply with Nevada Revised statutes. Major Site Plan Review Findings. Is the design compatible with surrounding development? Well, the design of the subdivision is functional. However, the product itself does differ from the surrounding development. Is the design consistent with development standards? Again, if they send it in for building code, our people, our planners who review these type of applications would probably approve it. Is it reasonably compatible with the surrounding development as conditioned? Well, as conditioned, additional mitigation has been recommended, including a buffer and additional landscaping and enhanced design standards. Oh, it might. It's not going to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. I can't imagine that once-developed noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration, illumination, and other hazards would be present, should all be mitigated. Now, here's the tough ones. These are the cluster development findings. So there's three findings for cluster development. And the first one is that the clustering proposal, compared with a more traditional site development plan, better attains the policies and objectives of this article, such as providing more open space, preserving existing trees and vegetation coverage, preserving view corridors, preserving sensitive environmental areas such as stream corridors, slide areas, wetlands, and steep slopes. Well, you probably realize that none of those things exist on this site. However, the applicant has asserted that the increased buffering on the west side may preserve the view corridors better than traditional development with no buffer. Second finding, the clustering proposal will have no significant adverse impact on adjacent properties or development, or the applicant has agreed to adopt appropriate mitigation measures, such as edge-matching, landscaping, screening, illumination standards, and other design features to buffer and protect adjacent properties from the proposed cluster development. While the applicant has agreed to adopt a buffer ranging from 5 to 22 feet, plus the 20-foot rear setback, but just for comparison, buffering between varying sizes of single-family residential parcels would be 30 feet, plus the residential yard setback. And number three, the clustering proposal meets all the other applicable requirements set forth in this article or other applicable ordinances or regulations. While, again, it complies with some of the master plan policies, it meets the minimum Reno Municipal Code standards, and it complies with Nevada Revised statute. That completes my presentation. Recommended motion is on the board, and as always, I'm available for questions, and the applicant's representative is here to follow up with a presentation of their own. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant.
All right. Thank you, Eric Hasty, for the record. I'm with Wood Rogers, and I'm representing the applicant AMH. I'll try not to be too repetitive, but I'm going to go over some of the issues and the things that we faced and kind of go give you a little bit more detail of how we came up with the site design. So just to give you a little bit more context about this site, the site does have two access points on 7th Street. It's currently a church, and so there is some traffic and everything that goes on and access in and out of the site. But the majority of the parcel is currently undeveloped. Being this as an infill site, we understand that there is going to be some sensitivities, especially with surrounding neighbors, and so we were taking that into consideration from the design standpoint. And before we were doing our, prior to our due diligence, something that we were keenly aware of, and wanted to make sure that we incorporated that into design. Another portion of this project is the Highland Ditch, which runs along the south part, as well as the eastern portion. And then, again, there is that RTC bus stop, which is shown there on the blue dot. So again, we are requesting a tentative map for a 28-lot subdivision. The cluster development is to reduce the lot size to allow the density of the SF8 zoning designation, and we are proposing 1.32 acres of common area. So looking at the surrounding area, this whole area, this project site, as well as the surrounding neighborhood, is zoned SF8. So they have the same zoning designation. And within the SF8 zoning designation, you're allowed to have eight dwelling units per acre. And with this project size, that goes up to 29 units. So with an infill site, especially within the McCarran Ring, trying to create density in these infill sites, we were trying to get to achieve the greatest density that we could. However, with the City of Reno Code and the SF8 zoning designation for single-family detached lots, 6,000 square feet is the minimum lot size, and that just doesn't come out. You have to modify the lot standards in order to get that density, even if you're going with the minimum lot size. So looking at what we're proposing compared to what City of Reno standards are, there's the table that's on the left. It shows in blue the City of Reno standards, and the ones that are in green that are in bold there are the ones that we are asking to defer. And so reducing that lot size from 6,000 square feet down to 3,200 square feet is mainly just taking the minimum lot width of, which would be a minimum of 60 feet, down to 35 feet. All the other setbacks are, will remain the same, and this is to help keep conformance with the neighborhood. We also agreed to reduce the maximum height from 35 feet down to 28 feet. And then when looking at the SF8 zoning designation and what is allowed within City of Reno Code, you know, there's also single-family detached, that's 6,000 square feet per lot, and then the single-family attached. Single-family attached would be able to go to tentative map, and it's the same thing. You're modifying the lot standards when you're going to single-family attached. So looking at some of the reasons that pointed us to the cluster development, looking at the unique site features of the site, again, I kind of highlighted the Highland Ditch that's there. But if you also understand that, within the SF8 zoning designation, cluster development is allowed in any area, either on the outskirts or town, infill, everything. Cluster development is allowed within the SF8 zoning designation. And the cluster development will allow the modification of lot sizes. So some of the unique site features that are specific to this site are the topography, as well as the onsite drainage issues. So some of the western lots currently drain onto the property, and then the property itself, the project site, actually drains into the Highland Ditch currently. With future development, we would need to accommodate for those, and we would not be allowed to discharge onto the Highland Ditch. Also to take into consideration is the slope. The high point is Everett Drive, if you look to the west, and it goes generally from west to east. So the lower end is sloping towards Highland Ditch. And so when we're proposing this development, and you're taking into account view sheds, which view sheds are taken into account, too. You're not, view sheds are not protected in city code, but when you're doing cluster development, that is consideration of the findings. And so looking at, considering view sheds, the farther to the east you can put buildings, then the lower they will be from the properties to the west. So proposing, looking at what we have proposed, along the western boundary, we do have to put a swale in there to pick up for the lots that are draining onto the site. There's also power lines that are on the western area, so we have to take into consideration the utilities that are in there. And then between, to the west of lots 2 and 3, there are also some utilities that still need to be maintained. And so with this swale, we can't just simply discharge this into West 7th Street, because typically, you would be able to do that with any development. However, in West 7th Street, there is no storm drain infrastructure, and so we need to retain all the water on-site. And so everything that falls on this, including the drainage from the west, is going to be retained with these retention ponds that are going to be part of the common area. And we will no longer be discharging to the Highland Ditch. Again, when considering view sheds, again, we are trying to be sensitive to the adjacent neighbors and understanding that these are proposed smaller lots. However, those, that 30-foot buffer is not applicable in this case, because it's SF8 zoning designation adjacent to SF8 zoning. And so what we tried to do is give as much buffer as we could between those lots, so that they have one property owner behind them right now that will maintain, that will continue to be the same with this. This will just be a common area, open space, and we'll give them separation between the two backyards. So if you had a traditional development, single-family detached, you know, you would have the, typically, you would have backyard sharing from those current residents to the west. We did try to buffer so that there would be some separation there. And then with the additional setbacks of the rear lot, in combination with the buffer, that allowed us to put those buildings farther to the east and drop them down a little bit farther in elevation. So again, Leah kind of went over this, so I don't want to reiterate anything here, but we are providing an additional buffer, and when you can take that into consideration with the rear yard setbacks, the homes are proposed at about 37 feet for a majority of them along the western boundary. This is almost exactly what is on the western homes right now. So it's really, although there's, you know, there's common area and rear yards, the setbacks for the homes are very similar to what's currently being there, or located on the houses to the west. If we were to do this as a traditional detached development, you'd only have to offset 20 feet from that property line. If you were doing a single-family attached, this would be a sideyard setback, so based on the height of the building, it could be anywhere from 5 to 19 feet along that western boundary. And then again, putting the houses farther to the east allows for a greater separation and elevation. And so that, and in combination with actually grading down below the existing grade, will drop these houses lower than the existing residents and allowing a greater separation. And so even with two-story homes at 28 feet, a majority of these residents will be located lower than the adjacent residents to the west. So on-site circulation and traffic, again, this is not a very big traffic generator. We didn't have to do any traffic studies with this, but taking into consideration the trips that are generated with a church use, and especially on Sunday, this is a pretty insignificant impact to West 7th Street. We are proposing to do four parking spaces per unit, even though code only requires two. Sidewalks will be provided along the, not only the streets, but the private drives as well, so that people will be able to walk to their houses. And the bus stop will still remain on-site. It will be temporarily relocated during construction and then put back on-site based on RTC's feedback. Again, as Leah kind of pointed out here, we are, we have agreed to additional design elements for... elements for these buildings, especially those lots one through 10 that are along the western boundary and along the West Seventh Street there. I would just like to highlight too, the conditions that we have agreed to and the applicant has agreed to with this. Typically, the City of Reno doesn't require any, any landscaping in the rear lots. These are, these are conditioned so that they are going to be landscaped at the same, same standards that the common area would be landscaped. And so this equals one tree every 300 square feet and six shrubs. And then along lots one through 10, the, we have agreed to have those be evergreen trees and then we're actually putting an additional tree in there. So there'll be three trees per lot in lots one through 10 to help kind of screen this from the adjacent residents to the west. We, they are existing trees on site as Leah mentioned and we have agreed to consult with a, an arborist prior to any grading or any, any further construction to see if we can relocate those trees or preserve them on site. But all together with the requirements and the conditions, we are proposing a minimum 117 trees on site with all the common area, rear yards, as well as the street trees and the front yard landscaping. So I'd also like to point out to the applicant, went to the NAB meeting and at that NAB meeting, being an infill site, they realized that there was going to be a lot of comments and from the surrounding neighbors. And so they hosted in a neighborhood meeting in September. We also heard additional public comment at the PC meeting where this item was continued. Through, we believe that through the conditions as well as working with city staff, we've really met the, the concerns of the neighbors as well as agree with the, the findings in the staff report and also indicating that the staff report is recommending approval. And just want to highlight again, the conditions of approval that we have agreed to. So that's my presentation. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Great. Thank you for that. We'll bring it back to the Commission for Disclosures, Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, I read emails, no other disclosures.
Commissioner Becerra, boy, howdy. Let's see. It's part of my running route. I called and spoke with residents. I met with the applicant's representative and I reviewed the material.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, I reviewed the emails. I've visited the site and I spoke to the applicant's representative.
On Zoom.
Yeah, Commissioner Velto, I live like a quarter mile away, so familiar with the site. I spoke to the applicant's representatives and I read and received emails.
Commissioner DelVR, I am familiar with the site and I read the emails.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site and I read and received emails. That will move to public comment. I actually have a handful of request to speak forms. Do we have anyone wishing to speak via Zoom?
We do not have anyone on Zoom with their hands raised.
Great. I will move to the request to speak forms. We'll start with Liz Knott. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name for the record whenever you're ready.
Liz Knott, good evening. I live at 2620 Everett Drive since July 1st of 1976. I am speaking in opposition to the Wood Rogers plan for 2,400 West Seventh Street. I appreciate your allowing my neighbors to speak at your meeting in October since public notices had already been sent for this case. The commission had no discussion nor took any action that evening. The Wood Rogers map shows our existing neighborhood back fences are nearly double the length of their proposed ones. My home is 1,878 square feet. My parcel is 7,841 square feet. My home takes up approximately one-fourth of my parcel. The ratio is one over 23.95. When my neighbors spoke to you last month, I thought they had clearly stated that the Wood Rogers plan was unacceptable. Was Tim Smith at 2,575 wrong when he stated the density of the houses on this plot of land looks nothing like the adjacent neighborhoods? Was Barbara Carosa at 2,585 wrong when she stated cluster designation under the City of Reno's municipal code is being used for this project when it is clearly not compliant? Was TJ Harvey at 2,605 wrong when he said that a cluster development is meant to protect a natural resource or a unique site feature? Was TJ wrong when he said that it is impossible for the proposed southwest common area to have a single access point shown in the plans as a five-foot buffer and is to be designated as a drainage channel and is American Disabilities Act accessible and is to serve as the buffer between the property lines? For 57 years, a church has graced this sacred land with cemetery to the east. Have the church and its property remain as it is means natural habitat will continue to live in this place and at peace. Finally, have they made enough sufficient changes? Sounds like they may have. I don't know. If not, please deny. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Whoa, I have five seconds.
Well done. Thank you. Next, we have Barbara Carosa.
Hello, my name is Barbara Carosa. I have a short but very impactful statement. The proposed development has been a concern for neighbors since its initial presentation relative to the designation stated in the application of a cluster development. It just does not fit within the parameters of current municipal code and that's the key to this whole situation. Guidelines and it exceeds standards. This fact alone negates the development proposal. This glaring inaccuracy is a concern that this designation was ever used to begin with and is the fact a petition by property owners was initiated, which all of you have in your packets. Concerned by homeowners for the proposed development has been very vocal in prior meetings, which have been cited, meaning the NAB meeting and the October Planning Commission meeting, relative to municipal code and we need to focus on that. We all live by rules, regulations and laws in our everyday lives. This is no different. Presentations pointed out in public comment by homeowners stated facts for cluster recognition, which again, the development lacks. You either meet the requirements, follow municipal codes, or you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have TJ Harvey.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is TJ Harvey, 2,605 Everett, speaking in opposition to West Seventh. Early on in this process, Ms. Bacotti told me on the phone, I agree, this does not meet the criteria of a cluster development. Since this statement, the revisions of this plan have been minor. I've spoken to developers in the area who've also said this is not eligible for cluster. When you read the definition of cluster development and look at the proposal, it's clear it doesn't meet criteria. I keep being told there's a gray area. There's only a gray area, gray area if you allow it. I've been in law enforcement for over 15 years, 10 years as a peace officer sworn to uphold the law. Reno Municipal Code is law. Cluster developments are intended to project, or protect a unique site feature or natural resource. The definition has a few mandatory components. Protect something, provide open space and provide a more gradual transition to the unincorporated county and public lands. There is no unique site feature here. The last component, transition to public lands, is never addressed. The land is bordered by homes, a canal and a cemetery and the open space was only added as an afterthought as, and has no usable access point. Wood Rogers has attempted to state they are eligible for development because they are protecting view sheds and providing common open space. Arguing the unique site feature that you are protecting is view sheds is laughable. First, what views? The views from the property or the views from our homes? The ones Wood Rogers told us we are not entitled to? The views from our property are clearly gone or from the property are clearly gone because that's what 28, 28-foot two-story homes will do. And the views from our homes, well, I've used a 28-foot tall ladder at the elevation of the Highland Ditch, the lowest point, to confirm that all the city views will be erased. It's also funny that Wood Rogers says they are preserving views through setbacks and grading down. The original plans haven't changed here. Actually, they've been reduced, the setbacks. If preserving view sheds was going to be your main contingent point of approval, the necessary, necessary component of a cluster development, shouldn't that have been mentioned in the original plans? It's not mentioned because they never intended to meet the definition of a cluster development. SF8 zoning requires 6,000 square foot lots. These lots are as small as 3,200 square foot. The other component never originally addressed was providing usable common space. After they were called out in previous reports for missing this element, they have added small areas near lots 10 and 11. If you review the submitted topo mats, which are on the screen and drainage reports, you will see both designated areas are major points of runoff from the western properties, also far away from the two retention ponds. The runoff actually channels through five-foot boundary between properties near lot 11. This is also the only access point to the common area, previously designated as a drainage channel. Condition six of approval states this must be an ADA accessible path to the common area. How can this five-foot area function as a major drainage channel and ADA accessible path? It cannot. At the end of the day, it should be painfully obvious to anyone looking at the project. The only, the only reason Wood Rogers has implemented cluster development is simply to reduce the required lot sizes mandated by SF8 zoning. Rogers is, sorry, their motives are clear. This is not about protection or resources or providing space as intended by cluster development. It's about packing more homes than zoning permits. Again, there are no natural resources, view sheds or unique site features that qualify for protection. There's no gray area. Commissioners, as I understand, to rule for the findings means the planning commission has made a decision based on established facts to justify the findings. Wood Rogers has not established the facts.
Sir, can you please wrap up your comments? You're about 25 seconds over.
Wood Rogers has not established the facts. They're asking you to complete their work for them. They have not justified this development and neither should you. Thank you.
Next, we have Ashley Harvey.
My name is Ashley Harvey. I live at 2,605 Everett and I'm speaking in opposition of the development. I want to start by saying I echo all the sentiments of the previous neighbors. I do not think this meets the criteria of cluster development and I do not think it should be approved as is. I would like to reiterate that code is law and passing something because of a perceived gray area will open up both Wood Rogers and the City of Reno to potential legal action. However, my primary focus today is to shed light on the character of the developer and Wood Rogers. It is my firm belief that they are using scare tactics, bullying tactics and being deceitful in an attempt to get anyone in their way out of the picture. As I've told my husband several times, they're leaning into the better the devil you know than the one you don't. What do I mean by that? They're painting themselves as people who want to come in and better the community. They've stated that they want to help with the housing crisis when so many cannot afford to live. With all due respect, creating 28 overpriced rentals in a neighborhood known for being a working class doesn't really help anyone I know who's facing an economic hardship. But on to the specifics. At the school board meeting, they led with slides showing that with a quick zoning change, another developer could come in and put an apartment complex or duplex. This was a scare tactic and I'll admit that it worked. Several of the neighbors talked about standing down after that. That wasn't until I spoke with the associate planner who assured me that everybody would have to jump through hoops, that code is there for a reason. Also, if, if the views were going to be preserved, why are we acknowledging that the trees for the homes one through 10 is there as a buffer as well? Also in regard to the view sheds, that only applies if we're standing on top of our roofs and I don't know how many of you stand on top of your roofs frequently. Several weeks ago, a neighbor saw a gentleman in the field. He went out to speak with him and the gentleman said that he represented the developer and reiterated his desire to want to work with the neighbors. He told this particular neighbor that they were going to put single-story homes along the western boundary, which was ironic because this was a few days before a hearing. In fact, that same neighbor is not here tonight because he still firmly believes in the word of that gentleman. This has very clearly been proven to be not true. So what's the devil that I should be afraid of? In closing, I would like to say that where morality might be gray, code is black and white. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Tim Smith.
Tim Smith, for the record, want to start out by saying I am not anti-development. You may have picked that up. That is my bread and butter of how I make a living, but what I am for is honest and fair development, which I believe this development is trying to avoid. Initial review of the plans, it does not appear to meet the definition of a cluster development. It comes across more as a use of the cluster development as a loophole in order to build more rentals rather than to provide any benefits to the community such as the view sheds, things like that. Cluster development in the municipal code states cluster development is encouraged to support the protection of sensitive natural resources, view sheds or other unique site features, promote fire safety within wildland, wildland interface, provide opportunities for shared common open space, protect documented wildlife corridors and provide a more gradual transition to the unincorporated county and public lands. Of the items listed in the code, the plan does not clearly meet any of these. View sheds are not preserved as the entire lot is being utilized. There is no natural resources identified that they wish to preserve, no old growth trees, although they did mention that. I'm not sure any of those can be saved based on the layout of the plan. There is no gradual transition to unincorporated county. It is in the middle of a neighborhood that was established 50 years ago. There is no wildlife corridor protected on the lot and no wildlife concern. The open space provided is not usable by anyone in the area. There are retention ponds or between the property line and the house's back fences. I don't know about you guys, but I don't like walking between people's back fences. If this development is deemed as acceptable as a cluster development despite not really falling into the definition, per code, they are required to adopt appropriate mitigation measures. These are defined as edge matching, landscaping, screening, illumination standards and other design features to buffer or protect adjacent properties from the proposed cluster development. These mitigation standards are not well-defined in the cluster provision of the code as clear cut, as to clear-cut standards as what those are, but I would defer to the single-family adjacency standards to get a more clear picture of how transitions are completed. The developer would say that this section does not apply since there is no change of zoning district from development to development, which would make sense if you followed the basic development standards. By its very nature, the neighborhoods would match. Here is not the case as parcel sizes are smaller, rear yards do not match. Each house on the existing neighborhood would now have two houses behind them. I would argue that since in the cluster provision, there is not a clear standard of buffering, we would, but the word buffer is mentioned, we refer to other areas of the code, which would be in the adjacency standards. The code gives three options, parcel size matching, yard matching and buffering. Right now, they have a 17-foot buffer, at least behind my yard, from rear property line to rear property line. The adjacency standards code requires 30 feet fully landscaped, 100 feet if not landscaped. Currently, yards do not match and the parcel sizes are not the same. If I could just have 20 more seconds, 30 more seconds. These are standards by which the development should be held to. It should be a point of approval to meet one of the transition requirements. Everyone needs to follow the city code as is meant to protect both residents and set standards to keep the city consistent. Approval of this development as it is currently drawn would be a disservice to the existing residents and have a significant impact on the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually have no more request to speak forms. Is anyone else in the chamber wishing to speak on this item? You interested? Can you please fill out a request to speak form and hand it to our secretary and then come up and state your name? You'll have three minutes.
Speak and then give it after if you'd like.
You can fill it out after, it's okay.
Hello, my name is Ariana and I'm, we live near the part where you're trying to build the houses. I don't know exactly the location, but just a warning, there are cats back there living in the shed. So those animals either need to get, go find a permanent home because they, I don't, because maybe I feel like they're, they're like strays and there's lots of them, like lots. And I don't want to squirt hand sanitizer in their eyes. So can we either remove the cats or let them stay in their natural home?
Very well done. Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you so much for your comments. Uh, anyone else in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the commission for questions. Uh, Commissioner Rormeyer.
Yeah, I have a question for Leah, please. Thank you for your very well-detailed presentation. I'm curious if a major deviation would have been an option, given the constraints, or variance, given the constraints, like the ditch and the retention.
You, uh, thank you, Commissioner Rormeyer, for the record, Leah Picati. Uh, you cannot ask for a major deviation from lot standards or density, and same thing with the variance.
Was the only tool, I suppose, we could call it that, the cluster in this case?
It could have been a cluster, or they could have come in with an SPD, like a specific planned district, where they basically wrote their own zoning code for this site.
Were there other site designs that could have met the code intentions?
Um, the site design that you see is the site design that was submitted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Becerra.
Thank you, Chair. You didn't have to look over, you already knew. Leah, I guess I'll just piggyback off of Commissioner Rormeyer's questions. Kind of to start, is there a comparable project or two that we can reference while we're having discussion and deliberation, um, that's very similar to this project?
Well, we have other cluster developments that we've done. A good example of one of those is at the intersection of Moana and Plumas. Um, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but there is a cluster development there that has some really cute little houses that, that they front Plumas with the backyard is the garage, and you enter from the backside. So, it, in that particular case, um, those retained that, that good street characteristics, they fit in with the neighborhood, things like that. And I have some other, I mean, there's other cluster developments in the area, but I've never seen anything that's really comparable to this. Generally, when I'm looking at cluster developments, excuse me, I'm looking at a much larger parcel with actual clusters of development throughout that parcel. And in that case, that would be, when I look at that and look at preserving view sheds and things like that, I'm generally thinking, you know, if you have a large site and you have a slope on one side, you would apply the cluster development, the hillside design standards, so that you could stagger homes in one section of the parcel while retaining the rest of it as an open space concept. That's generally what we see with cluster development.
Great, thank you. I think you answered my question. I was looking for like a project that we can see one-to-one, or that's in parity with this one, but it doesn't sound like that's really the case, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So my follow-up with that is that, um, chapter 18, point 09, point 204 of Reno's Land Development Code defines cluster development, as you know, but for edification, moderate density attached or detached development that is designed to protect sensitive areas to allow for common open space. So what specific benefit does this project offer to current residents in the broader community as being presented?
That's a great question for the applicant.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, um, you know, with the cluster development, I think the unique site feature that we are protecting is the fact that, you know, even though this is an infill site, we do have the, the properties to the west draining in on this, and this is typically not what you see, especially when you see an infill site. And the fact that West 7th Street does not have storm drain facilities, and that we cannot drain into the Highland Ditch, these are the unique site features that we are accommodating and also protecting as well with storm water and storm water quality. And again, flowing, you know, when, when you have all, the reason why you're not allowed to discharge into Highland Ditch is because when you have this multiplier effect of all these different, um, areas draining into the ditch, you know, this could be a potential issue for downstream, people downstream of the Highland Ditch. And so that is the unique site feature that we are, we are accounting for and protecting.
Okay, great. I will pause there. I have plenty more, but make space for others.
We'll, uh, we'll circle back. Commissioner Villanueva, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for the applicant. The roundabout, or not roundabout, but the cul-de-sac, excuse me, the cul-de-sac emergency vehicles, are there any, is there any concern there?
Yeah, so Eric Casey for the record. So Reno Fire was able to, to review this, and because of the length of the cul-de-sac, from what I understand, there's no need for secondary access, and it's designed to be able to have, allow, accommodate for on-street parking as well, for a fire truck to be able to get in there, turn around. The private drives are also designed to city Reno fire standards as well, as far as the length of them, and being able to access for emergencies.
Okay. And then, one of your visuals during your presentation, you highlighted two, um, entry points. Can you pull that?
Yeah, for the existing site?
So for the development, is there only going to be one entry point?
Yeah, there's only one entrance. It's just that single, that single street, um, is designed to city Reno standards. And so it's just, it's basically just a cul-de-sac that will lead into this. It's going to be in alignment with the street that's directly across from 7th Street.
Okay, and again, no issues with emergency, fire hasn't said anything, there's no issues. The, my other question, sorry, I wrote this down. Oh, the rear of the houses in the development, and then the rear of the adjacent, rear properties, is there going to be a space, is there, is there a fence behind, and then another fence, or are we going to have a gap in between the two fences?
Now, so there, there's the, you know, the property's existing owner's existing fence, and then there will be, oh, a grade separation, and then a little swale, and then there will be a fence, and then along the northern part, a fence for, a new fence for the new lots, and then along the northern part, there is a bit of a wall as well in there.
So there will be?
They will be fenced back, rear yards.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
The rear yards will be fenced.
Yeah, but there's going to be in between, there's going to be a gap between the fence for the development's, for the property development homes, and then the fences of the homes that are already in existence, so there's going to be a gap, right, or?
Yeah, the, I mean, as, as it's proposed right now, yes. So I don't know if, I mean, the applicant will, would want to make sure that that's as secure as possible, and that's going to not create any safety issues, so I think that's something that they will probably consider going forward, but as we're proposing it right now, there's no fence joining.
As you're proposing it right now, there's no?
No gate or fence between that.
Okay, so it is just going to be, okay. Is that normal? Just from a design, it seems odd that there would be that, but it's not a big deal, I'm just, I'm just curious. Okay, I do have questions, but I'm going to let others speak.
Yeah, fair enough. Let's go to Zoom. Commissioner DelVR, Commissioner Velto, did you have any questions at this time?
Yeah, it's Commissioner Velto, I have a few questions for the applicant. I want to go back to Commissioner Becerra's question, because I, I too want a better understanding of the clustering development analysis. So I, I'm looking at the site plan, I'm looking at the proposed, um, project as it's laid out, trying to understand how clustering better attains preservation of trees or vegetation, or preserves sensitive environmental areas. Do you have any opinion as to how clustering as applied here would preserve existing trees? It does look to me, looking at the aerial view, that the way the project is outlined, that there are some trees that will be maintained through the clustering, but can you help me understand kind of how, how you're viewing this compliance with the clustering?
Yeah, so, so those trees that are, that are on-site along the western boundary, Eric Casey for the record again, those trees that are on-site along the western boundary, which, which could potentially be, be preserved, we, we had, the reasons why we're not calling them out as being preserved is because we need to, one, verify that they are viable, and two, that NV Energy will allow them to, to maintain. But we are, you know, there is a condition in there to have certified arborists go out there and identify all the trees that are on-site, and identify any that are going to be viable for preservation.
And then, I, when you were answering Commissioner Becerra's question, you were talking about drainage, and can you kind of talk a little bit more about how clustering development finding relating to drainage trees, et cetera? What is the analysis necessarily for how it affects drainage?
So, with, with the drainage, it's, it's kind of a twofold, right? With, with the on-site retention that you have to provide, because of the limitations of draining into the Highland Ditch and everything, you have to also, that, that takes up a lot of development and of, of the developable area. And so in order to be able to provide density in this infill site, as well as provide for those, accounting for those factors with the Highland Ditch, that's, that's what we came up with the cluster development for.
Understood. And then there's a, there's a line in, in this clustering development analysis that says that compared with more traditional site development plans, what are traditional site development plans that would be available aside from what is being proposed?
Yeah, and I think that's, thank you for bringing that up, Eric Casey for the record. I think that's kind of maybe something that's being misunderstood here, too, is we're, we're not threatening anything on any other type of development, but when you look at the, the findings for a cluster development, it says compared to a more traditional development. And under the SF8 zoning designation, single-family attached is an allowed product. And so that would be a more traditional development, as in line with a, you know, a 6,000-square-foot lot. And so when you're talking about setbacks, if you had a, a single-family attached product that was being proposed, you can put those single-family attached products up to five feet to 19 feet, based on the height of the structure, along that western boundary. And the same with the 6,000-square-foot lots. If you had a 6,000-square-foot lot there, your setback, your rear setback would be 20 feet minimum. And so when you're comparing that to what we are proposing with the, with the buffer, as well as the rear setback, that is, that is the comparison there. So when you're looking at a more traditional development, does this, does what we are proposing have less impact on the surrounding neighborhood? We believe it does.
Thank you, and I have, I want to pivot topics, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, uh, one of the findings that, um, we traditionally talk about, and is required is the, is, has to do with traffic, and I understand that this type of project doesn't have a traffic study. Living just down the street and driving down 7th every day, there are a lot of, I think, people that drive at high speeds. I don't necessarily think that your project would contribute to that, but is there kind of anything that you all can do that otherwise would not happen to allow for there to be either, say, like a, I don't know, stop sign, or some sort of, kind of a, like, speed radar that would help solve a different problem while we're considering this proposal?
Yeah, Eric Casey for the record. You know, I think, I don't know if a stop sign would be appropriate. I think the applicant is, um, understanding that, you're right, you know, there is, there is an issue that, that is along 7th Street. I don't think this will, will add to that, and it's not going to go away if this development doesn't go through. I'm not sure if a stop sign is appropriate, or what RTC would deem appropriate, but I think the applicant is open to maybe some type of, you know, some type of signage to warn people if they were, if they were going too fast or something.
Okay, and would that be an agreeable condition? And if we were to approve this, that there be some sort of speed radar posted near the development?
Yeah, I think, um, so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, I think as long as it's within the standards of, of what RTC would recommend and the city of Reno, then I think that's something that we would be applicable to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner DelVR, did you have any questions at this time?
I do, this is Commissioner DelVR, and I think this might be a question for, for Leah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just kind of curious as to why there are actually sort of two pretty significant things that we're deciding on within one piece, the, the map itself, and then also the clustering? Is that sort of, and apologies if this is off scope or anything, I'm just trying to kind of wrap my head around things.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Again, Leah Picati for the record. It's typical that you'll see these kind of projects lump together, especially when you have a tentative map. A lot of times, you'll see it along with a mass conditional use permit, or you might see it with, um, with a major site plan review. Usually, you'll see it with grading or things like that.
Yeah, that makes sense. And then also, just sort of curious, and this sort of piggybacks off of what Commissioner Rormeyer might have been alluding to earlier, like, how many homes could you put there without the clustering being in effect? It sounds like maybe 14 or so, I'm just eyeballing, eyeballing the math.
Yeah, the, the math doesn't, even though it's technically eight dwelling units per acre, it doesn't exactly come out to that number, but it's, but it's somewhere around what the applicant said, like 27. However, with cluster development, cluster development does allow for a 15% increase in density, so it, they actually could have gone up to like 34 units in this, which, per our master plan policies and infill development, we may have preferred that.
Okay, thank you. That was all I had for now.
Commissioner, I'm trying to?
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Velto, did you have a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up on that, because I think I misunderstood that earlier on. So, Leah, I also want to echo what Commissioner Rormeyer said, that your presentation was very good tonight on this, it was very well done, so thank you for that. But so are you saying without the cluster development, the applicants could still build same number of units?
Yeah, well, we're looking at a few different things here, because we're looking at lot sizes, which have to be the 6,000 or 7,000, and then we have to look at the density as well. So even though this is single-family, you, there are several different residential type uses that could be allowed, such as, you know, an attached product, or duplexes, or things like that, so that could impact the density. But if we're just looking at lot sizes, I think it's like 14, somewhere in there, but if we're looking at the density that's allowed, we'd be looking at about 27 units. Cluster development allows the 15% increase, so we could look at 34 units with cluster development.
Thank you.
While you're up there, actually, I have a question, I guess it's more of a straightforward question, but can you just maybe walk me through how you get to a recommendation of yes on this, right? So you kind of get to, and I get that it's, it's difficult, but, you know, you had kind of pointed out, there's almost like a 50/50 split for the sake of arguing, like, kind of satisfies the master plan, but not really, but there aren't any, I, I don't think there were clear issues with municipal code or NRS, so the issue is kind of like, we're torn on master plan, I don't know, call them priorities even though they're not ranked, so that, that plus, I guess, this issue of the cluster development, like, how do you get comfortably, I guess, to that recommendation? Like, can you explain your thought process to me?
Yeah, I can explain it a bit. And, and to be just totally transparent, I was on the fence. I, I really could have written this probably as a denial as well, but in the long run, when I started looking at it, I thought, well, okay, with some conditions of approval, I think we can get there. I think we can get to a point where, where I find this compatible. One of the problems with the cluster development is that there's no quantifiable standard in there. So there's nothing that says they have to double the amount of open space, or they have to provide, you know, X number of open space per dwelling unit, or it has to be adjacent to something that would provide open space trails, and there's nothing like that in there. So it's hard when you're a planner and you're working on something like this, and your applicant, who you work with on a regular basis asserts, no, it is, it is cluster development. So as you read through the staff report, you can clearly see where I'm, I'm saying maybe it is, and, and maybe it's not. In weighing the competing master plan policies... In weighing the competing master plan policies, like I said in my presentation, it's tough. Because if I if I recommend denial, and I say, well, it doesn't meet these, it does meet all of these. So in looking at that, I think overall, overall, it meets Reno Municipal Code. Does it meet the intent of code? Does it meet the intent of the master plan? Well, that's kind of where you guys come in. I I can look at it from a code standard, from a black and white standard, and say, if I was reviewing this, would it would it get approved? And the answer is probably yes. But it's a discretionary review. And when we have these discretionary reviews, we we look to you as our as our as our body to decide whether the intent is there for this. So when we wrote that code, did we intend for this kind of development? When we when we created these master plan policies, is this, was our intent to restrict these kind of developments, or was it to protect these kind of neighborhoods? And so in terms of getting there, you read my staff report, but really, it's up to you guys.
That is, that is really helpful. I appreciate the the eloquent response and kind of transparent thought process. I have a follow up question, and I'm sorry if if you've explained this and I'm just not getting it, or based on, you know, some of the other commissioners on it questions, but what what is the reason for a cluster development versus kind of the alternative that you explained, where if you're getting the same amount of lots effectively, I understand there's nuance, but it's kind of apples to apples, again, for the sake of arguing. So what drives, I guess, like, a decision to go for the cluster development? And to your point, why would the city have maybe preferred like the alternative from a review perspective?
Well, I think that maybe doing a specific plan district for something like this, maybe not would not have been viewed quite as favorably, because that's more of a whole zone change than just a deviation, which I look at the cluster development as a as a deviation. I don't know, I've I've done, in my years as a planner, I've done a handful of cluster development projects here and in Arizona, and I have never done one like this. As I as I stated, usually when we're talking about protecting views sheds, preserving open space, protecting these wildlife corridors, trails to open space, things like that, we're talking about these larger pieces of property. And and in my previous jurisdiction, we were all about the views. And and again, view shed wasn't protected under that code, but people would commonly come in with these larger parcels, and they would develop these homes in clusters on the hillside so that they were preserving each other's views, not necessarily the views of the neighbors, but each other's views. And then in and and because they they, we gave them that opportunity to develop that in a cluster, they in turn provided all this open space. So I I see the cluster development as sort of a give and take. I mean, as one of the the people who stood up here said, you're providing, so you're getting this, and then you're providing this. And I'm not necessarily sure if if it meets the intent. It meets the code, doesn't meet, I don't know if it meets the intent.
That's super helpful. That's all I have for now. Again, I really appreciate it. I'll turn it back to the commission. Commissioner Becerra?
Sure, thanks so much, Leah. I think I know the answer to this question, because you just answered it, I think, maybe indirectly with Chair Harris Armstrong. But I did want to ask, and it might be maybe a question in advance for my fellow commissioners as we deliberate, but how does this project align with the housing goals and policies outlined in the master plan, particularly regarding compatibility, quality of life, and neighborhood preservation? And I'll underscore those last three. And keep in mind that I do try to engage with city council conversations and meetings where they do talk about trying to preserve, you know, neighborhood characteristics and so forth, and just, yeah, I'd just like to take your your take on that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Becerra. I I think that my slide that I did on the master plan guidance kind of outlines that. I mean, as you could see in that slide, it is meeting several policies related to the SF land use designation. It's meeting some policies related to those central neighborhoods. But it's but it's also, it's also in direct conflict with some of the policies that are related directly to neighborhoods, general neighborhood policies, central neighborhood policies, and those that that are adjacent to that corridor as well.
Great, thank you, Leah.
Does that answer it?
It absolutely does, and I'll just pivot to Eric, if you may. Sure. Thanks, Leah. Hey, Eric. Might be an awkward question, but I think I have to ask it, just because it's brought forth to us and maybe like to get some clarity around that. But was there ever any kind of communication with residents, particularly like promises made or things that weren't above board about this project in order to gain their trust?
Eric Casey for the record, we had a neighborhood public meeting, and everything that we presented to the neighbor, the neighborhood, is in your staff report. And I even sent a description to tell you to, and and I am, I'm kind of surprised to hear those allegations, honestly, because I do not feel that in any way that that was something that I did or was trying to be misleading. I think we presented the facts from the beginning of this. And, you know, to, from from our standpoint, too, it's not like we're trying to be misleading in any of this, because our our goal is to is to try to meet the requirements of the of the master plan. And by providing density in McCarran Ring for for this area, and providing single family detached homes in an area that's primarily single family detached homes, and then going above and beyond and doing the what the applicant's willing to do with the trees to to make sure that it does conform, because there is a lot of mature trees in this in this neighborhood. And by him accepting those conditions to really try to get this this neighborhood into conformance with that, you know, is something that I think we've been trying to do from the beginning, so.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I, and I ask that because we have to kind of...
I appreciate you giving it up.
Way out everything, and I think as Leah mentioned, that there's the Reno Municipal Code, NRS, and then there's our master plan, and that's kind of the area where we try to really be the the collective voice of reason with everybody else involved, and trying to make sense of it all for for all the neighbors here. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Great. Applicant, you can just stay right there, but I am going to quickly call up staff. I have a one question for you. Thank you, Leah. Just to clarify, did you say the applicant could build multifamily in this space? It's single family eight, but could they?
They could do an attached product, or they could do like duplexes and triplexes. Those wouldn't be allowed by RIT, but they could be permitted under discretionary review.
Okay, thank you, for the applicant. So I actually would be in favor of multifamily, but we have the applicant in, you know, as presented, and I'm actually, you know, in favor of this project. However, I'm held up by a couple items here. So if you can take me over and get me to see why I should vote in favor of this, then, you know, we may be able to get a yes. So where I'm being held up is, I'm looking at the code section, and I don't know if you can pull this up or if anyone can pull this up, but I can read it for you as well. But Section 184903 talks about general standards for residential districts, and then it goes Section A. Then subsection six, it says cluster development. I don't know if you have that in front of you, but it defines cluster development in residential zones. And then it, I think we heard this definition a couple times tonight, so I'm going to spare you, but then it goes when allowed. Minimum lot size may be reduced through clustering of development if the applicable decision-making body finds that. And then it goes into three. Do you have this in front of you?
I'm trying, I think I might, but I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out where you're at here.
Okay, it's section, again, I'll read it off to you. 184903, subsection A, six.
Okay, I can't, I'm not, what what page? Do you have a page number?
Yes, I do. It's, it's the development code, it's 4106.
Okay, all right, I got it.
Cluster.
Cluster. Okay.
So if you can go ahead and review that, and if you can convince me why you guys can satisfy that, then...
Yeah. So so when allowed, right, like, this this cluster development is allowed within SFA zoning designation. It doesn't matter where where on the where in the city of Reno, SFA, it's it's allowed. And so for when, you know, I think we've, I've tried to cover this, too, again, and you know, Commissioner Veltro's comments, too, about when you're comparing this to a more traditional development, right? Is clustering going to be less impactful to the surrounding neighborhood? And I think with the buffering, as well as the additional setbacks of the rear yards, I think we can say that that it is. Helping preserve viewing corridors, I mean, I understand that that's, people's perceptions of views are a little bit different. I went over that presentation in my slide. And then no adverse impact on adjacent properties, or the applicant has agreed to adopt appropriate mitigation measures, measures such as landscaping, which we have with the with the conditions, screening, which are we have with the with those three trees in the backyards of lots one through 10, and other design features to buffer and protect adjacent properties from the proposed cluster development. I believe that we have through all of those with the additional buffer, as well as the rear setback, and the conditions that were added, not only to the landscaping, but also to the the design features of the homes, and considering everything else that's that we need to account for with this lot as far as the the retention ponds and everything else.
With, I think, one of the items we're going to be talking about later on the agenda, the changes to the code. I think one, some of those changes, and maybe not this, these changes that we're looking at tonight, but I think at some point, we're looking at more affordable housing and multifamily, things like that. If if you guys ultimately got a no today, couldn't you just come back in the future when those, when when the code was updated? Because I do feel like this isn't aligned with the vision for the future of Reno and what we kind of do want to start seeing. I just go back, I'm like, Leah, it's hard for me to to fit this into the space that we are looking at here. Is that, I mean, what, is that an option?
The the builder who is the applicant on this is single family detached homes. That's what they do. And so...
Well, that's fine. I get that, but I mean, we don't know what the future holds as far as the changes to the code. I just, it, I don't know. Maybe somebody else can convince me, because I do like the project. I think it would fit really well here, but I I go back and forth. Anyone else? Thank you. Nothing further from me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rohmeyer, did you have a question? Okay. Are there any other questions from the Zoom attending commissioners at this time? Hearing none. Did you have additional questions, or can we move into discussion? All right, let's move into discussion. Commissioner Rohmeyer?
Volunteered for that one. Gosh, I really want to thank the city for deliberating so well on this, because it is a very challenging case. I see this, based on the definition of cluster, very much as a stretch. Don't see how this applies as a cluster development. And on the same token, I really believe in infill and density, and those things are odds here. There are designs that could have been considered, which would have achieved those mitigation lot match on the west side that were not considered clearly, and higher density perhaps on the east side. So for that alone, I just don't see how this is a cluster development. And yet, I could totally support a variance if that was an opportunity, because there are hardships with the retention of water that's flowing on the site, because of the need for a retention basin, because of the existing ditch, because there's no storm drain. I feel like the site has a number of hardships. So I would be interested, I guess, as it was mentioned, that that just is not an option of variance in this case.
You, Commissioner, Commissioner Becerra, did you have any discussion?
Sure. Really just echo Commissioner Rohmeyer's sentiments there. She's always the eloquent voice amongst this body, and so so are the others. I I do agree that I can't make the finding with seeing it as a cluster development. While it meets the bare minimum of Reno Municipal Code, I don't think that's the bar we want to set. I don't think it really meets the broader intent, as I think some of my fellow commissioners mentioned, and staff as well. I do I do applaud the applicant for working with staff to try to, you know, get there. I'm just not there myself yet, though.
Hey, Commissioner, Commissioner Villanueva, did you have any discussion?
No discussion. It was, it's a hard one, but I think I have my decision. Nothing further from me.
Sure, thank you. Commissioner Veltro or Commissioner Del VR, did you have anything for discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Veltro here. I, I think I I've struggled with this cluster development finding. That's really the only one that I have been struggling with, though I did appreciate the explanation from the applicant insofar as them explaining why a more traditional site development plan wouldn't necessarily preserve trees and also may not protect stream corridors and other environmental concerns. So the way that they explained how the project and the way it was developed may benefit from storm drains and runoff, I think is a reason why we can make the cluster development findings, at least insofar as it goes to Sub A of the cluster development finding. Beyond that, I do think the project is compatible, especially when you're taking into account alternatives that could be there, but just the general findings I can make for the rest of them. So while I, you know, I understand that there might be maybe a disagreement with the method at which the project's gotten here. I don't think that it's, you know, our job to say, well, there was another avenue you could have gone if it can make the findings, and I don't think we should require more than what is otherwise required. And I'm hearing from the, from Leah and from the city's perspective, that a lot of these findings can be made. As far as the policy portion, I do think that's our job to try to make those policy findings, and for a lot of those, I feel really comfortable making those findings, because this allows for more housing, increases densification, which is something that we, you know, strive for as a as a city. So I feel comfortable making the findings, albeit I am stuck on the cluster development. I will note, though, I do appreciate that the applicant is willing to do things beyond what is required. Sounded like they would be agreeable to a form of amendment that would essentially allow for there to be a speed radar put at this location, which I do think is very beneficial to to the area in general, and some sort of speed indicator sign that would be posted there would overall be beneficial to to Seventh Street and really help the community. Given what is on the table as an alternative, that they could do more densification in the future, and that those options are available aside from single family, I think that would be probably less characteristic of the of the neighborhood, and that's why I'd be in support of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Del VR, do you have anything to add?
Well, actually, it's nice going last. Everybody has very articulated, very much articulated what was on my mind, so I think I am good with the discussion for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually will just make some brief comments, and then I think we'll move to a decision. But I have a hard time getting there with with respect to the the cluster development findings specifically, but some of the other things I heard just kind of through the line of questioning with respect to it could possibly go one of two ways, and that there are issues with respect to intent of the law that make this murky. Like, I typically like to get comfortable with more of a black and white. Like, I typically like to get comfortable with more of a black and white, kind of this fits or it doesn't, and this is just too gray for me, so I, I won't be able to support it. And with that, bring it back to the commission, entertain a motion.
Question for clarification, maybe from our illustrious administrator. We tend to put forth the motion before us in the affirmative, correct? Or can we modify what's on the screen in favor of something else?
You can. If, if you do make a motion to recommend a denial, I would just ask that you, for the record, state what findings you cannot make. Correct.
Okay. Happy to make a motion. Before I do, Leah, could you do me a solid and pull up that slide, please? That shows the split fifty-fifty policy findings and lack thereof.
I sure can.
Thank you, all right. And as I make the motion, I, I guess I'd like folks to just kind of sit with this for a moment and see that this comes from the master plan, which we put a lot of time, money and energy as a city, and it's supposed to be the voice of the people. We do this every ten or so years, or, you know, some number like that. And when we're in a pickle, we try to, you know, fall back to something like this, and again, be that voice for, for the community, especially in these gray areas. And we have to live with our neighbors, look them in the eye and say, yeah, this was an okay decision based on these things, or this was not an okay decision. And, I don't know, I, I, I guess I would ask folks to, to say, hey, if this, if I were in this situation, would I be okay with compromising that list on the far right? And if so, what are we getting in return for this project? And so far, I haven't really seen that trade-off in, in a really good way. So with my motion, I guess, could, could I just negate the affirmative, or can I? I'm essentially going to deny.
Yes, so if you want to put the motion back up, Leah? Oh, sure. So essentially, if, if you could make the recommendation based on non-compliance with applicable findings, I move to deny the tentative map and major site plan review. That's, that's the change you would make, and then, as I mentioned, say what finding or findings you're unable to make.
Right, I think the applicable findings that you mentioned, so. Based upon compliance, oh wait, sorry, in, in the case of LDC two five dash zero 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 three, twenty-four hundred West Seventh Street, based upon compliance with the applicable findings as presented, I move to deny the tentative map and major site plan review, subject to the conditions listed in staff report, failure to meet the findings as presented. Are there certain ones that you want to outline?
I think what he's saying is he wants you to identify at least one specific finding that you cannot make.
Sure, I mean, we have them listed in that.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want me to pick one, or?
Oh, the findings, I'm sorry. Are you just going with master plan?
Yeah. Well, because I cannot make the findings in accordance with the current master plan and as presented in the staff report.
I have a question.
Please.
If we have different findings that we can't make, do we make the vote based on the motion with findings we could make? How does that work?
I'll have legal chime in, but I would assume that as part of the discussion, you could, you could note any additional findings that you cannot make.
That's, this is Jasmine Maitt, so that's correct. If you agree with the motion to deny, but on a different basis, it's helpful if you include that, that different basis.
Does someone wish to modify or make an addendum?
Sorry, is that something we can just address via a roll call vote? So if we get a motion a second and we do a roll call, someone has a difference of opinion with respect to the motion, is that the appropriate time to do it? Or would it be as part of a second?
Are you talking a difference of opinion with respect to a motion to approve or deny? Or are you talking a difference of opinion as to the basis?
So if we have a motion to deny at present, that was read into the record, someone may make a second. If the person that makes the second doesn't have any issues with how the motion was presented, but we move to a roll call vote, and someone else, you know, is voting for denial, but they want to make clear that they have a different basis or lack of finding for that denial, could they do that as part of the roll call vote? Or are you wanting it as only a function of the motion in the second?
No, 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 they could do it as part of the roll call vote.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Hopefully that helps everybody.
May I clarify my motion? I'm just going to write it out.
Sure.
So I'd just like to clarify that I am in denial for lack of adhering to the master plan and the definition of cluster development as presented this evening.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Villanueva, a second.
I have a motion, a second, sorry, and a second. Secretary, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Carrie Rohrmeier? Aye, but on the basis of cluster finding number one. Christina Del VR?
I agree with the motion to deny.
Commissioner Villanueva?
Yes, because I cannot make the finding for cluster development.
Commissioner Velto?
No.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Yes, and specifically only with respect to the finding related to cluster development. So motion carries, sorry. Motion carries, and before we close this item, I'm going to read the appeal process into the record. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal together with these must be filed with the city clerk within ten business days, starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. With that, we will close item five point one and open item five point two. LDC two four dash zero 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 one one, Arrow Leaf zoning map amendment. So we'll get a presentation from staff.
We wait for the room to clear out a vote, or go ahead and go?
I don't have any issues. If you want to get started.
Let's go. All right, good evening, members of the commission. Jeff Foster, associate planner, for the record. Tonight, the first case I am bringing you is the zoning map amendment for the Arrow Leaf project, LDC twenty-five dash eleven. The project's site is about one point nine six acres in size. It's five vacant parcels located on the west side of Harvard Way, about five hundred and fifty feet north of the intersection with Vassar. If you don't know quite where that's at, you may know where the main U.S. Postal Service office is at, so it's not too far from there. Again, it is five vacant parcels. The request is a zone change from multifamily thirty units per acre to general commercial in order to provide for consistent zoning over the property, which also includes six additional parcels that are the subject of a separate conditional use permit application, LDC five dash, twenty-five dash twelve. The key issue that we look at for most zone changes is whether or not the proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning, as well as land uses. Regarding those land uses, to the north, we have an auto repair business. To the east, we have a climbing gym. An undeveloped parcel also to the east. To the west, we have undeveloped parcels and a vacant single-family residence, and we have apartments to the south. The zoning is, again, multifamily thirty, MF thirty, which does conform to the master plan. However, a zone change is being requested to change the zoning to general commercial or GC. And this is related to the six parcels surrounding the subject parcels that are currently zoned GC. Four of them are shown in the stars. There are two other essentially sliver parcels that I couldn't make a star small enough, so, but they're there. The master plan is suburban mixed use, SMU. Here are three goals and policies that support the requested zone change. Here are the allowed uses in the general commercial zone. The ones down here at the bottom in yellow require either a minor conditional use permit, which is an administrative review, or a conditional use permit with approval from the planning commission. Here are the development standards for both the current MF thirty zoning and the proposed GC zoning. The main differences are the allowable height in the GC zone, as well as the allowable number of stories. Here are the recommended findings for the request, and staff can make all recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do we get a presentation from the applicant?
The applicant, are you going to be making, you're not going to be making a presentation on the zone change, are you?
I, just a really quick statement, kind of what happened.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Mike Daniels with Ten Eighty-Five Group, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Nineteen fifty-seven, the, the property was subdivided. It was subdivided where, I don't know, there's Wooster Lane and Iona and a couple other streets in there, and there were a total of ten parcels. And half of them, five of the parcels, were zoned over the course of time to multifamily thirty, MF thirty, and the other to GC. And what we're going to do is we're going to consolidate all those as one big parcel, and the project that you'll see next is, is what we're proposing on it. So that's the purpose and the reason behind the general change.
Understood. Thank you for the brief overview. We'll bring it back to the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, please start.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Becerra, same disclosure.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, same disclosure.
Commissioner Del VR, same disclosure.
Commissioner Velto, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, Commissioner Velto, familiar with the site? I believe that is all.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak for, is there anyone wishing to speak over Zoom?
We do not have anyone in Zoom, no.
Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment for this item and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Becerra?
Sure, thank you, Chair. Just really a clarifying question, maybe Jeff, I'm sure. This is tied to our next item, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And so if, if we approve this, then we discuss the next item separately?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, they stand on their own merits, yes. And recommend that, remember that you're making a recommendation to the council to approve it. The planning commission doesn't actually approve the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
All good here.
Do you have any further questions from the commission? Hearing none, happy to move into discussion. Do we have any discussion, or perhaps a motion?
Commissioner Villanueva, motion to approve.
Commissioner Del VR, I second.
I, I think we need to read the full recommended motion. Yeah, Commissioner Villanueva, could you please read the language on this screen, just as a formality?
Sure. Commissioner Villanueva, motion based, or motion for application, LDC twenty-five zero 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 one one. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Thank you. We have a motion, and can we get one more second?
Commissioner Del VR, I second the motion.
Wonderful, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We will now close item five point two, and before moving to item five point three, I'd actually propose a five-minute break. Everyone okay with that? All right, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
Formal pedestrian crossing or crosswalk between both sides of the project to facilitate pedestrian safety. So this would be amended to, this motion would be amended to also include condition number 10.
Thank you, Jeff. Are we getting a presentation from the applicant on this piece of it? Looks like we are. Whenever you're ready.
Well, I have a long presentation, but I don't think I need to go into it. Mike Daniels with 1085 Group, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's been a pleasure to work with Jeff. He's been amazing. We just went through this project in no time. It's been great. So, and he did a great job explaining it. So maybe to cut things short, I'll just go through and be available to answer any questions. I do have one question on condition six, and it has to do with how long the project is to be affordable. That all depends on the funding that we get. There's tax credits, bond funds, everything else. And so what we'd like to do is just change it to where the length of the, how long it is affordable will be depending on the type of funding that we get. If I don't get any funding, which, you know, we're not hoping that doesn't happen, but then, then, you know, it wouldn't be an affordable project. We'd have to try to build it as a market rate project. But right now, we, everything's looking good on the tax credit side, the bond financing. We're working with the city of Reno on a number of different, there's, there's just a bunch of funding that takes it somewhere between 20 and 30 years, or 30 and 50 years. So that's the only condition change that we'd want to make on that. The other thing I want to let you know that although this is an affordable project, it's being built, you know, we've built 30, 40 thousands, I'm with Pacific West Builders also, units over the years. And this is built just like our market rate projects. They're roughly the same size, average wise, within 50 square feet. They've got all the amenities, they're, they've got all the exterior stucco, all the interior amenities. It's really a nice, really, really nice project. So we, we hope we get approved and get to move forward on it. So if you have any questions, we're here. So I've also, Bob Lawler's with me. He's the expert in the, in the affordable game in our side. So he'd be happy to answer any questions also. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. We'll bring it back to the Commission for Disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, familiar with the site.
Commissioner Rarimire, same disclosure.
Commissioner DelVR, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Valtto, same disclosure.
Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosure. We'll now move to public comment. I don't have any requests to speak forms. Is there anyone wish, anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
Does not look like we have anyone with their hands raised on Zoom, but we did receive correspondence for this item that was forwarded to the Commission and entered into the record.
Great, thank you. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak under public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment for this item and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Any questions from our Commissioners in Zoom?
Yeah, I, this is Commissioner DelVR. I have a question. I'm not sure who, who should answer, but it has to do with that condition six, you know, the affordability, and I'd kind of like to understand it from, you know, city of Reno's standpoint about why that condition is in there, and then maybe a little bit from, from the applicant to understand why they don't want it there again. I was trying to put it all together.
Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record. So the condition was put in the staff report based on the fact that the application was positioned as an affordable housing project. And during the staff review, I asked what was, how long was this going to be an affordable housing project?
Right.
And the response came back as a minimum, as between 30 and 50 years. And so staff felt that it was appropriate, since this was being positioned as an affordable housing project and marketed as such, if you will.
Right.
That we condition it also as, as appropriate. I will point out that the applicant did not request any of the allowances that would be afforded to them under the code in terms of increased density or something like that for being an affordable project. So there, there's, there's not a strict tie to being an affordable project. In other words, they didn't get X number of additional units or anything like that for being affordable. So it, it just kind of comes back to it was positioned as an affordable project. It was, it was indicated that it would be affordable for a period between 30 and 50 years, and therefore we wanted to make sure that that was kind of what you accepted it as. Having said that, I've spoken with the applicant and my staff would be comfortable amending the condition to have some kind of a caveat or language at the end tying it to the amount of time that they end up getting the funding for. So if that's 12 or 15 years or something along those lines, whatever period of time that they actually get the, the funding for, we would be fine with amending the condition to, to tie it back to that.
Okay, and that would be, so for example, like you're saying, if it's for 12 years, then it would be amended to 12 years. And then sort of what happens from the standpoint of, you know, does that condition just go away and they can then continue to rent, you know, at higher rates? Or is that basically the concept?
Yes, yeah, well, yeah, the, the, it's not into perpetuity. They can turn to market rate after the period of time that they are allotted by the Nevada Housing Division.
And then this is probably a question for them, but if they don't, if they don't get any, and like he said, of course, he wants it approved, but if they don't get any, any funds approved, then what, what's the implication for us approving this based on that? Does it, does that sort of go away and they reposition it and bring it back to us?
I, I believe, and Mike, you might be able to speak to this, but I believe that we have ways to amend the condition. I don't know that it would need to come back to the Planning Commission. I think we might be able to amend the condition administratively if they're not able to obtain the funding.
Correct. Mike Reilly, for the record, Planning Manager, the other consideration is this project does meet the general commercial standards for a standard multifamily project.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was all I have for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Valtto, while we're on Zoom, did you have any questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on, on that question, is there any reason why, aside from, let me rephrase that, sorry. If condition number six were not in a condition for approval, would the city be able to make all of the other findings?
Yes, yeah, the, the, the rest of the project would stand, nothing else would change. We would be able to make the findings without that condition.
Okay. I, I really like requiring this to be affordable. I am super in support of that. I am very concerned that is not something we can do, and I don't know if that's, I can't really tell you why at this point, but it just seems like questionably legal and possibly overstepping our bounds. With that said, I would support it because I like the idea of there being more affordable housing, but I kind of share the sentiment of the prior Commissioner, just that concerns me.
For the record, Mike Reilly, Planning Manager, I, I think it's important to state that that condition could go away entirely, since they are not requesting any of the benefits, so to speak, of an affordable housing, the incentives. This could stand on its own merits, so you could move forward with the removal of that condition entirely.
I guess I, sorry to, real quickly, I guess I don't want to remove it. Is, is legal okay with that condition being in place?
This is Jasmine Mata. I think since, since Mr. Foster clarified that they were not requesting any of the, of the characteristics that might be granted for an affordable housing project, that this could be approved as it is without an affordable housing condition, and because I know that they are in for, for state and federal funding that would require at least certain units to be affordable, I, I think it would be better to remove that condition altogether.
Thank you.
Not hearing any from the Zoom crowd. Do we have any questions from the Commission at this point, or do we want to move to discussion? Commissioner Becerra, please.
Sure, I guess for the applicant, it might be tagged team between you and Mr. Jeff.
For the record, Mike Daniels.
Hey, Mike. How you holding up? Okay. So for clarification, were you asking for the entire removal or just the change in language, so it wasn't as long, but just maybe a shorter period?
I think that we would, we'd be fine with the, the timing corresponding to the funding. And, and believe me, our goal is for this project to be affordable. We've already, like your attorney just indicated, we're deep into applications and Bob can go deeper into how much funding we do have. But if, as long as it's tied to the amount of funding that we do get, and if we don't get any funding, then it wouldn't go as an affordable project. I mean, that's, I mean, either that, and it, maybe it just doesn't get built.
You, you mentioned that there are like many of these projects in your kind of, or this is not your first rodeo with, with this type of project, correct?
We haven't done an affordable since 95. We've, we've built thousands and I think s, close to 20,000 units over the course of the, since about 90, and, but we haven't done affordable for a long time, and we've, we're just getting back into it.
Okay, great. I, where I'm going with this is I was really excited because I actually thought this was just general commercial, not affordable, and having a brief with staff as well, it's like, man, this is the bar. This is what affordable housing should be, right?
It's, it's a, it's a great project. The problem is, is that you can't solidify all your, your, your funding, your affordable funding until you basically have a permit, right before you have a permit. So the plans have to, it has to be permit ready.
Kind of, kind of to, to jump on what Commissioner Valtto was suggesting of keeping it, would you be amenable to keeping a modified version of that statement so it affords you flexibility if you didn't get the funding, but it keeps it there to, to ensure that it's affordable for X amount of years based on funding?
Based on funding, yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, great. That's what I would be leaning towards too. And then it really helps, honestly, on a, on a wider scale, it raises the bar for, for others, and y'all would be like the, the poster developer, if you will, for that type of development.
Commissioner Becerra, if I can just make one, one comment for your consideration, when they're, if they get the funding and it comes through, there, there'll be stipulations in order for them to get the tax credits, that they'll have to record documentation that they are affordable. So it might be somewhat of an issue that takes care of itself, so to speak, when that funding comes through. So I just, I just want to make, clarify that.
Commissioner Villanueva.
I was just gonna say something similar. I mean, if it's gonna, it's gonna be affordable if they get the funding, and yeah, there's not gonna be any issues there. And if they don't get the funding, then they, you know, they either build or they don't build, but they're not, it's not tied to any incentives. So I, I just don't see any value in keeping it.
Do we have any discussion, or are there questions still out there?
Happy to make a motion.
Okay, or a motion. Commissioner Valtto.
On the matter of, sorry, let me make sure I'm on the right one. Okay, there we go. In the matter of case number LDC 2500012, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions listed in the staff, staff report, except that condition number six shall be removed.
Go ahead, Jeff. I think there was one more addition you had, right?
And what about condition number 10, the additional condition that we emailed?
My apologies, with the additional condition number 10. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We'll now close item 5.3 and move to item 5.4, LDC 24-00010, Security Circle Yard Zoning Map Amendment. And it looks like we have a presentation from staff whenever you're ready.
Daniel Martoma, Associate Planner Specialist, for the record. Before you is a, a request for, another request for recommendation to the City Council for a zoning map amendment. And so the subject site is approximately 2.2 acres that occupies two parcels located at the northeast corner of Virginia Street and Security Circle. The current zoning designation of the subject site is mixed-use suburban, which does not conform with the site's master plan land use designation. And so the proposed zoning change to mixed employment would bring the two parcels into conformance with the master plan. And so key issues with this request that were analyzed were compatibility of the proposed zoning to the surrounding zoning districts, as well as conformance with the master plan. And this slide illustrates the current zoning of the subject site and surrounding properties. And please note the shared mixed-use suburban zoning of adjacent properties on the east side of Virginia Street, as well as the residential zoning, or the residentially zoned properties on the west side of Virginia Street. And so through the adoption of the reimagine Reno master plan, the, the subject site, as well as the adjacent properties on the east side of Virginia Street, were assigned the mixed employment master plan land use designation. So just want to make that distinction, mixed employment, master plan land use designation, as well as the proposed zoning of mixed employment. And so as a result, there have been some land use inconsistencies on a local scale between the city zoning map and the city's master plan. And so this proposed zoning to mixed employment will, is in substantial conformance with the master plan and these highlighted master plan goals and policies. And so here's a comparison table of the use types allowed in both the mixed employment zoning district, highlighted in green here, as well as the mixed-use suburban zoning district, highlighted in gold. And so with the, with the exception of residential use types, the, the use types allowed between both zoning districts are actually quite similar with some minor distinctions, and so, and then here is a table listing the development standards of both zoning districts. And it's important to note that per Title 18 of the Reno Municipal Code, a site plan review would be required for non-residential developments adjacent to or within 150 feet of residentially zoned property. And as mentioned, this subject site would qualify due to existing residentially zoned properties to the west. I can point that out again. So here to the west. And so with, with that, any site plan review would review residential adjacency standards to mitigate any potential issues related to noise, lighting, site signage, setbacks, building orientation, et cetera. And at present, the applicant has applied for and requested a site plan review for the subject site. And it's important to note that the approval of that site plan review is contingent upon City Council's approval of this zoning map amendment request. And these are the recommended findings for approval of a zoning map amendment, and city staff has made all, all the findings. And of course, this is the recommended motion, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thanks so much for your presentation. Bring it back to the Commission, oh, sorry, before I, do we have a presentation from the applicant, or is it just staff tonight?
Well, the applicant is here, I guess, to answer any questions, but I don't believe there's any formal presentation.
Understood. In that case, we will bring it back to the Commission for Disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Becerra, no disclosure.
Commissioner Rarimire, no disclosures.
Commissioner DelVR, I am familiar with the site. That's it.
Commissioner Valtto, no disclosures.
Commissioner Armstrong, no disclosures. We'll now move to public comment. I have no request to speak, I have no request to speak forms. Is anyone on Zoom wishing to speak on this item?
No one on Zoom, and we have not received any correspondence for this item.
Understood. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for questions. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Becerra?
Sure, just, hey, Daniel, really just a clarifying question here. Great job. This is really just also to bring, bring up this area up to conformance, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so if we denied it, we'd be going against conformity, right?
Essentially, yes.
Great, all right, thanks.
Do we have any further questions from the Commission? Hearing none, we can go into discussion or a motion. Do we have any discussion? Anyone willing or ready to make a motion?
In the case of LDC 25-0010, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance.
Mr. Commissioner DelVR, a second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. We'll now close item 5.4 and open item 5.5, TXT 23-00005, Title 18, Zoning Code Cleanup. And it looks like we'll get a presentation from Angela.
Just before I begin, did you guys want to take a quick break? This will be a long agenda item.
Ah.
Anyone need a five minute?
We just took a five minute break, so I think we're good. We'll rally. Yeah, thank you, though.
Maybe after this one, Angela, because we have another one with you after this, correct?
You do. Are you guys here for this? Okay, so it sounds like we do have some public comment. Did you want public comment to go first, or do you want me to go ahead and kick it off?
Yeah, actually, I, normally we do the other thing, but yeah, let's just open public comment for this item. Do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak on this item? Looks like we got at least one. Can you just fill out a request to speak form? Oh, you were prepared. Go ahead, Sarah, thank you, whenever you're ready. John McGinnis?
Yes, Chair Armstrong and members of the Commission. My name is John McGinnis, and I'm the Vice President of Sales for the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, or the RSCVA. On behalf of our President and CEO, Mike Largata, who is not able to be here tonight, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak briefly on this topic, which we believe is vital to the economic health of the city of Reno and Northern Nevada. At the RSCVA, our job is to entice visitors to come to Reno Sparks, North, North Lake Tahoe area to enjoy the outdoors, the special events, the great entertainment offerings that we all know and love. Ultimately, it is our job to, to support the local comedy, economy by getting those visitors to stay overnight at transient lodging establishments in Washoe County. The RSCVA is the sales and marketing organization driving visitation to the destination, and in those efforts, we are branded as Reno Tahoe. Tourism is a $5.2 billion industry in Washoe County. According to our research partner, Tourism Economics, tourism generated more than $440 million in state and local taxes in 2023 and supported more than 43,000 jobs. While the diversification of our economy has been key to recent growth, we believe tourism is still the driving force of the regional economy. This is the area that thrives on events. As locals, we look forward to experiencing this, the nostalgia of 5,000 classic vehicles taking over our city and rolling through downtown. We're excited for theatrical performances and concerts at Wingfield Park, and we know when it's time to enjoy a chicken wing or Italian food festival right here in downtown. Our research shows that visitors also enjoy these amenities. More than ever, travelers, especially the new generation of travelers, want to immerse themselves in local culture and celebrations that are authentic to the destination. At the RSCVA, we are planning around that. We have $1 million budgeted to support events, new and existing special events, and also to go out and find events that may want to relocate to Northern Nevada. We do this because we know the events support visitation, and visitation supports businesses big and small throughout Washoe County and right here in downtown Reno. These are tax-paying businesses, they are, these are established businesses, these are businesses that rely on visitation, and these are businesses that rely on visitors having a reason to come to downtown, to play in downtown, and to stay overnight in downtown. Some of the larger casino resorts in this area are also heavily invested in improving downtown. In 2015, they supported a self-imposed nightly room surcharge to help fund improvements of public city-owned buildings around downtown. Part of the reason was to continue bringing the region's largest convention to town. Since 1995, the United States Bowling Congress, or USBC, has brought more than 1 million bowlers to the National Bowling Stadium, accounting for over $1 billion in economic impact for Reno and the surrounding areas. And that's just USBC. We know this is a lot of information, and I want to end by saying that on behalf of the RSCVA, we appreciate the difficult work you do as a planning commission. And I want to ask the Commission to please consider the impact of events in the downtown area, how it affects visitation, how it creates room nights for larger businesses, and how it creates new customers for small businesses in the area, and how all of these tax-paying businesses and their employees benefit from gaming, entertainment, and visitation in downtown Reno. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else in the chambers wishing to do public comment on this item? Seeing none, and before I close, do we have anyone on Zoom that wanted to speak for this item?
We do have Tyler Colton on Zoom. Tyler, when you're ready, please, looks like you're unmuted, please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, Tyler Colton. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I've spoke to a couple of you about this, and I'm gonna kind of layer on what Patrick Coleman spoke about. So within Title 18, there was the live entertainment update that happened in January of 2021. It was kind of a blanket that put an 11 o'clock purview on live entertainment, and that after that, you'd need a conditional use permit. I think that the intent was like a little bit overreaching, and I don't think the intent was to be that. So there are some areas that it seems don't need a conditional use permit. There are some businesses that are already existing that have been forced to get a conditional use permit. So the language within Title 18 currently is a little all over the place, and feels like for the live entertainment portion, needs updated. I think what we'd like to see is some type of zones created, entertainment zones, so that would kind of really define which businesses would need a cabaret license with the additional conditional use permit, and which businesses and areas would not need to apply for that. So an example, there, I'm in Midtown, and I was told that my cabaret license allows me to operate without a conditional use permit with the hours that I applied for. So I'd be grandfathered into those hours. But a new establishment on Virginia Street's opening, and they were told they will not need a conditional use permit, and that they're 24 hours. There's another bar that's existing on Forest Street in the Brewery District that has been there for 10-plus years. They, last year, were forced by code to get a conditional use permit. last year, were forced by code to get a conditional use permit, yet they had already been 24 hours. So there's a lot of discrepancies between what areas, who, between planning, business, and code of who needs to get this. So we're kind of asking that you take this up with in Title 18, that you could create these entertainment zones or update the code so that it's much more clear and that each area is entertainment zones, people really understand what they will need as an existing business or person opening a new business. And I want to thank you all as well. Watching you guys over all these months now, what a difficult job. So much comes over your desk. So I applaud you in really paying attention and trying to do the best for the city, and I know it's important. So thank you, and hopefully you will take this to council.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak?
We do not have anyone else on Zoom, no.
Okay, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to staff for the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. For the record, Angela Fuess, Assistant Director with Development Services. I think we're bringing up, there we go. So this is a long time coming. This is finally the text amendment. It's an actual ordinance now. This is the final document, the final red line. We've been working on this for several years. We started this process right after we adopted our zoning code back in 2021. The previous zoning code was a major overhaul. It went through probably two years' worth of time and meetings and a consultant to help us rewrite the zoning code. And so the product of that is what we have adopted today. Now, over the last couple of years, we've been keeping track of what things don't make sense, areas that conflict with one another, things that, from an outsider's perspective, people have said, I don't even know what this means. And our staff says, yeah, I don't know what that means either. So we have a list, and we've been cleaning it up. We also have a number of things that are just basic. For instance, we used to call our department "community development." So there's probably 50 words, 50 times in the zoning code where it references "community development." We're no longer called that. Now we're called Development Services. That's a very basic cleanup, but you see it a lot throughout the code. Another basic one is site plan review. We have two kinds of site plan reviews. We have a regular site plan review, and we have a major site plan review. A lot of people are confused on, well, what's a major versus a regular? So we said, let's clean that up. Let's just add the word "minor." So we have a minor site plan review and a major site plan review. Again, just a cleanup. It doesn't change how it's reviewed or what the findings are, but throughout the code, it's probably written in there 100 times, the word "site plan review." Now says "minor site plan review." Just simple things that help make it easier if you're trying to review this code and understand it. There was a lot of areas that, again, were very inconsistent. So fencing, for example. We had a whole section on fencing, and then in other sections of our code, they had unique sections on fencing. So you may have a whole chapter about fencing, and then you go to our industrial requirements, and there's additional requirements for fencing. And then you go to our parks requirements, and oh, there's additional requirements for parks. And so that became very confusing because people would inherently think, oh, if I wanted to know about fencing, I would go to the chapter titled "fencing." You wouldn't think, oh, let me find some weird section of code that also talks about fencing. So we called that inconsistencies, cleanups, just making it easier for the average person, as well as our staff, to try and make sense of this very big document. And then, of course, anytime we have changes with the legislative session, they have rules and regulations and laws that come out that then we need to change as part of our code. So we have been working on this for quite some time. We've held many, many meetings, had many discussions with the general public. We started the process by first going out to the NABs. That was a year and a half ago, and we just gave them a high level, here's some things for you guys to be involved in. We put all of the NABs on an email stakeholder list. So anytime we sent out an email, the NAB members were involved, so they could continue to watch what was happening and share that with their community. And then we held a technical advisory committee. This was about, I think, 30 to 35 people, planners, engineers, landscape architects, architects, public works, people at staff, people outside of staff. So it was a good group of people that we had to review the changes. We did that over the course of seven different meetings. And then we went out to some of these smaller groups, like the Historic Resource Commission. We have a whole chapter dedicated to historic resources, and so we went to them, made sure that they were in support of the changes. We went back twice to make sure they were comfortable. Lot of smaller meetings. We met with the landscape community. We met with the school district. We met with anyone really that had questions, any smaller groups that had questions. And then we held bigger, I would say, more public stakeholder meetings. This was for anyone, anyone that wanted to be involved. I don't care if you lived in Reno, owned property in Reno, lived in Carson City, but were just interested in Reno. Really, anyone that was interested was invited to attend these meetings. And some of them were virtual and some of them were in person. Very few people showed up to the in-person. I will say that the virtual ones were better attended, but not greatly attended. And I think part of it is, this is a very technical document. The average person has never read a zoning code, probably never will. So I think they were just looking for high-level information. We did go to Planning Commission three times. We broke it up into three meetings to help make it more digestible as we worked through a lot of the details. We went to council, got their input based on some of the feedback from the Planning Commission. And then we went back to the NABs this last October, really just to kind of come full circle and just make sure that we tried to get that final input with the neighborhood. So, again, big things we want to highlight, what's not part of this current zoning code cleanup that we're doing separately. ADUs. This group has talked a lot about ADUs. We are moving forward. Council has initiated that. We'll be doing our stakeholder outreach starting in January, so that will be coming before Planning Commission. Short-term rentals, we're not sure when that's going to come forward. We're waiting for council to initiate that, but there's nothing in the zoning code tied to short-term rentals. Changes to the noise ordinance. We had quite a few residents in the downtown area approach us about creating a noise ordinance. At this point, we've been working with our city management team, and we are going to go separate direction from the code cleanup. So there'll be an item on our next council agenda talking about noise. And then we had included some smaller things related to tree protection. After meeting with Councilwoman Durer and our management team, it was decided to pull all of those items out so that at a separate time, we could do a separate text amendment, really specific to tree protection, and do a deeper dive and make some, I'd say, bigger, broader changes. So we pulled anything out that we had initially proposed. Signs, same thing. Initially, with this code cleanup, we had a couple of small changes, but we took all of that out. So no more any changes to signs as part of this process. We have a separate process that we've lumped all of the sign changes with. That went to Planning Commission just for feedback already. We are going to city council just for feedback next month, and then, of course, that will come back before you as a formal ordinance for your review. We also have a separate text amendment tied to telecommunications, which is cell towers, that will also be coming before you guys at a future time. So high level, I want to talk about some bigger themed type changes. You know, there was a lot of changes. We can go through any of the redlines, but from a general perspective, I wanted to just kind of give you big picture some of the changes that are coming out of this code cleanup. So number one is related to regulating number of stories. All of our different zoning districts regulate how tall a building can be and also how many stories a building can be. So for instance, if you're in, let's say, a general commercial zoning district, let's say you can go up to 65 feet and maybe they cap it at five stories. So we said, well, that's kind of conflicting where you have two different sets of rules. So we said, at the end of the day, I don't know that we care so much how many stories you have, but we do care about how tall that building is. So we removed all requirements related to number of stories and kept the building height. And this does follow more aligned with kind of best practices. If you look at any other zoning code, we couldn't find other zoning codes that actually look at number of stories. They all look at building height. So this is really getting us more aligned with best practices. We have another kind of really old, archaic section in our zoning code tied to setbacks. And in some of our multifamily and in all of our mixed use, we have two different setbacks for side setbacks. So one of them is zero feet. And again, if you're trying to promote infill, you want to encourage more the ability to build more up rather than out. And so that zero-foot infill or zero-foot setback allows you to build on the property line. But then we had a second set of standards that said "or greater than five feet or greater than 10 feet." And so we have development coming forward saying, well, I want to build at the three-feet property line. So I meet the requirement because the setback's zero feet. We're like, well, actually, there's two standards. And some of our staff say, no, 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 they can build zero or up to five. Other staff said, no, no, it says zero or greater than five. So again, from a conflict perspective, even our own staff had different opinions on how that works. We went back and we looked at other codes. Does anyone else do this? No, nobody else does this. So I think that was just one of those old, archaic things. It's been in code for decades, and it probably had something more to do with building code requirements. Building code has certain regulations if you're building on the zero setback line. But again, building code and fire code regulate that. We don't need the zoning code to regulate that. It's already being regulated somewhere else. So we took that out. Anywhere that we allow a zero-foot setback, we maintained that. Anywhere that we had like three or four different versions, we said, take that out. Just have one set of setbacks. Other things related to infill, we had some sections of our code that required development within alley have access off that alley. And in theory, it's good. From an infill perspective, you want the ability to have access off an alley if that's where your primary access is, or maybe the street on the other side. But what we found is it was actually kind of impeding development where developers would come to us and say, I really don't want to design my site, so I have to have access from the alley. I want to do this cool little infill project, and it doesn't work. The other issue is that the city does not maintain alleys. We don't have funding to maintain alleys, and so this has become more apparent as you drive down alleys and see that they're full of potholes and the city's not maintaining them. So if we're encouraging people to use alleys, but we're not maintaining them, we kind of have a conflict. And we said, whoa, 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 we probably shouldn't regulate this as a mandatory in our zoning code. We definitely encourage infill to use alleys, but we're not mandating that you have your primary access off an alley. Related to parking, we looked at allowing more compact parking. That's basically parking that's more narrow and shorter. Not everybody drives a big truck in Nevada. A lot of people do, but we do have a lot of people that have more smaller compact cars. And so we want to be, again, a little bit more up to speed on what the norm is. And so we are now allowing more compact parking within a lot of our big commercial shopping centers. And then on-street parking, anytime you have parking requirements, we have requirements of how many spaces are required on your site. And then we also say how many can be required on the street. So as long as that parking is literally in front of your parcel, we call that street parking. You can't use your neighbor's front of their parcel, but we added more allowances for that on-street parking.
Chair?
No, go ahead. Let's go ahead. It might be easier while it's fresh in your mind.
Okay, great. The slide before with the alleyways, can you touch on that a little bit? What do you mean the requirement for alley access? I'm not familiar.
So like, take Wells Avenue kind of area in general. There's a lot of existing alleys. And we have requirements that if you're coming in with a new development, let's say you're going to build a duplex. And let's say you have the, you know, the front of your house is a street. Let's pick a street anywhere in the Wells Avenue area, and the back of your property is an alley. So we have some requirements that if that is a case and you're doing new development, we want you to have garage access on the alley, not on the primary street. So your average street, anytime you look at a normal, single-family neighborhood, right, you see a garage, you see a front door from the street. And so we had requirements that said if you have alleys, your garage access has to be from the alley. And again, we felt that at one time, it was more of like, oh, it makes it look like a better neighborhood because you're not looking at a garage door from your main street. So in theory, that was kind of a nice thing. But in practicality, a lot of these infill developers are saying, well, you're forcing me to put my garage in back, and that doesn't work for my type of development. Maybe I'm doing four units or five units, and I need garage access from the front for some units and garage access from the alley for other units. So we got more complaints than we did positive feedback on this requirement. So we said, we support all use of alleys or front streets. We don't want to hinder infill, just giving more flexibility. Does that make sense? Okay. Now, with supporting infill, kind of opposite of that is how do then we protect existing neighborhoods? While the idea of infill is great, our master plan supports it, we do get a lot of complaints from neighbors that live in areas where infill is happening, and they feel that their neighborhood is changing because of all this infill development. So we also wanted to be cognizant of that and try and do something to protect existing neighborhoods. So one of them is we looked at some of the commercial uses, things like car washes, things like Jiffy Lubes. You know, you have those oftentimes mixed in with neighborhoods, and we wanted to make sure that neighbors were being protected. A lot of these car washes are 24-hour use. You can go get your car washed at night when, you know, your neighbors are sleeping, but you're there washing your car and vacuuming your car. So we put in some standards that say, whoa, 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 again, for these car washes, great, we support them, but we have to have some protections to help mitigate the noise and the bright lights and the, just, you know, everything that is kind of that negative impact. So we added some extra standards related to car washes. Anything with a loading dock, you know, let's say your target and you have a loading dock in the back, and maybe next to your target facility is multifamily. So again, now you have multifamily next to a shopping center. That shopping center has loading docks. There's trucks coming in probably 24 hours a day, dropping off and picking up. And so those are the kinds of things that we're trying to protect when we look at existing residential neighborhoods and some of these commercial or non-residential uses. And then we have some conflicting requirements in code. We have a lot of requirements, what we call more of residential adjacency buffers. That's things like lighting, additional screening, additional landscaping, additional fencing. And so some sections of our code say these additional standards apply if you're within 150 feet of residential zoning. And other sections of our code say 300 feet. And so again, depending on what section of the code you're looking at, you get conflicting regulations. So we took the more conservative approach, and we said, anyone within 300 feet, not 150 feet, new development coming in next to residentially zoned property would have these additional buffers. So again, trying to protect those existing neighborhoods. The other thing that came feedback from city council is related to mobile home parks. A lot of our mobile home parks are not zoned residential. They're often in commercial zoning districts, so they would not trigger these residential adjacency protections because it's based on what your zoning is. So council asked us to add some language that protects existing mobile homes anytime new development comes in. And then one of the big ones, too, is related to our setbacks and step backs. So anytime you have existing residential development, and again, it has to be zoned residential, and you have a new development coming in, let's say you have a one-story house and next door is a vacant lot, and somebody wants to come in with a three-story apartment. We have a requirement with that new building, that new three-story building, if it's over 24 feet, any part of it that's over 24 feet in height has to step back a foot for every foot of development over one foot. This is something that had already been in our code, but again, we had so many different conflicting regulations on this step-back regulation. We said, let's just make it clean. Let's make sure that everyone understands what it is, and I'll have some great examples of what I'm talking about. But this is something that, again, protects those existing residents. We don't get a ton of, I would say, high-level multifamily development next to single-family homes. We typically get, you know, two stories, three stories, maybe four stories, moving into one- and two-story development. So from a big-picture perspective, I think this will help the smaller infill projects. The big garden-style apartments, we typically probably don't see them in residential development. So I think on these smaller projects, it will be helpful. Other things we're doing to protect neighborhoods, we looked at our screening requirements. That's that table on the right. Our current screening requirements are based on your zoning, not based on your use. So you kind of look at, what's my existing zoning? What's my use coming in? And let's say you had a mixed-use zoning. You could be apartments, you could be single-family, you could be industrial, you could be commercial. So we said, well, wait a minute, we probably should base our screening, how we're protecting two different uses, based on a use, not based on a zoning. So we cleaned that up to better protect uses rather than zoning. We also looked at lighting. We get a lot of complaints about lighting from these big industrial projects and commercial projects. So anything within 100 feet of residential, you're limited in height of 18 feet for your lights. And so that is a light both in a parking lot and a light on a wall. And you think, well, 18 feet, where did that come from? If you think about a two-story house, two-story houses generally probably 24 feet. So a lot of times, people have a light on the second story of their house. So again, it's not something that's majorly crazy and out there to say you're going to be capped at 18 feet. We also looked at how tall a lot of these semi-trucks are. Generally, they're about 13 feet. So this allows flexibility for these semi-trucks to get through a parking lot with 18 feet tall pole lights. And then we also looked at, within our industrial zones, because we're having so many conflicts with warehouses conflicting when they're next door to residential, we now added a requirement that if you are in the industrial zone and you want to do a warehouse, if you're within 300 feet of residential zoning and you want to operate 24 hours a day, you're no longer allowed to do it by right. Today, you can do- Today, you can do it by right, you can go straight to a building permit. Now what we're proposing is that you would have to go through a conditional use permit. So that again, the, the neighbors could weigh in and have input. We can look at it on a case-by-case basis and make sure the right protections are in place to help buffer those existing residents from that warehouse use.
Would that include mobile homes?
Yes. Okay. And then more specifically on industrial development, we have some sections of the code where they were just kind of goofy. We have a rule that says, if you're zoned industrial, commercial, and the square footage of your building is more than 500,000 square feet, we require that you have multiple tenants. Now that means that, let's say you have a big Amazon that comes in and they're more than 500,000 square feet. A lot of those big buildings are closer to a million square feet. This section of our code requires that they had multiple tenants. And I, I, from a zoning perspective, I'm not sure why we care if it's multiple tenants or one tenant. That seemed to be a bit of an overreach. And at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the, the site itself is designed to, again, mitigate the impacts, right? Lights, traffic, parking from the employees. So we said, well, let's, let's take out that requirement that we no longer care if you're one tenant or multiple tenants, but anything over that 500,000 square foot, still will go through a public review process. From a, um, a use perspective, the, the building itself is not a use. So a conditional use permit really wasn't the appropriate entitlement. It would be more of a site plan review, but we wanted to keep it at planning commission. So now it just triggers a major site plan review. So everything still comes before planning commission. Again, the thing is now that we're looking at it for anything over 500,000 square feet and we don't care if it's one tenant or multiple tenants. Other things with industrial development, we looked at where we currently allow that indoor manufacturing, processing, assembly. For the most part, that's typically like a big warehouse. And so we looked at where, where, where it's allowed now by right. And we modified it within our mixed-use, mixed-use suburban, so our mixed-use zoning, it was permitted by right. Now we have it go through an entitlement. So again, we can just look at it from a case-by-case perspective. Similar to that warehouse distribution, we looked at where we allow it by right and said, ah, any chance where there, there could be residential nearby, but the zoning is so open to so many different uses, we don't really catch it. So now we're going to require more of a, um, an entitlement through that process. And then data centers, that is a, a use that we currently do not have in our zoning code. We are starting to see data centers. We have one coming before planning commission in the very near future. That will be our first one, so that's exciting. But we, we needed to establish it as a use so we could look at what are the parking requirements. We are requiring a conditional use permit for all data centers just because again, they're, they're, they're new and they're new u- unique. They do have impacts and so we want to make sure that we can address them depending on where they're at.
What do they qualify as now if I, if they were to come forward today?
For the most part, we took them, look at them as more of an indoor manufacturing or a warehouse type use. Because we haven't had any come in yet, it's all been just talk. The ones that we have had conversations with, we've said, tell us a little bit more about what you're doing. You know, do you have employees coming to work for you? Do you have big trucks coming? So this, now we've defined what we would consider a data center. We're also limiting, if you're building a brand-new data center, we're limiting how many dock doors you can have so that you may tell us you're a data center, but you put out a bunch of truck dock doors, you're not really a data center if that's what you're doing. So we, we have some limitations now on making sure that they truly fit that definition of data center.
And that would be in an industrial zone, I?
Mm-hmm. So yep, anywhere where we allow our industrial zones, also in our general commercial. I think we also allow them in our mixed-use and again, all with a conditional use permit.
You, well, they don't exist yet, so?
We don't have any yet.
We don't have any data centers yet, but we don't, but the use doesn't exist yet either.
Correct. So what we have done in the past, we have written what we call an administrative interpretation. Anytime there's a use that doesn't exist, we have to create a use. And so when people call us and say, hey, I want to build a data center, we have to give them a set of standards. So we wrote an administrative interpretation. Now we're putting it into code.
Oh, so there, there's one that exists already?
We, we, we have none built in Reno. We have none that have applied to be built in Reno, except for one that is now applied for a conditional use permit, but it hasn't come before us yet.
Yeah, I understand that, but does the interpretation exist yet? Has an interpretation been established?
Yes.
And does that interpretation, you probably don't know off the top of your head. Uh, I'm just curious. So industrial, I don't know if I, so general, commercial. Do you know what the, the interpretation indicates for that zone currently? And I know it's only interpretation. I know we don't have any yet and I know it's all kind of hypothetical.
Yep.
But what, what is it?
That we would allow data centers in the general commercial zoning, but with a conditional use permit.
With a conditional use permit, okay.
Yep. All right. And then again, for industrial development, we really amped up our screening requirements for anything with a dock door. Here's a great example of these big industrial buildings that have dock doors. Just imagine if you live next door to that and there's semi-trucks coming in and out 24 hours a day. So we have additional screening requirements for all uses, not just warehouses, but all uses that have loading docks. And we also have a process if you want to do something different so that it can be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. The hard part with these big warehouses is that most of the time, the land's not flat and square. Most of the time, there's some uniqueness to it. There's some topography. We don't know where the residential is. So it, it, it's easy to write a code if everything was flat and square and equal. But for the most part, most of the vacant land that's left in Reno is challenging to develop. So we want to provide some flexibility so that you can go through a public review process if needed, if you need to modify any of those standards. And then we also allowed warehousing in public facility zoning. And we thought, well, why, why? Like, public facility is not intended for warehouses. It's intended for schools and libraries and fire stations. So that, in our mind, really didn't make sense. And I don't even know that I can think of a public facility zoning that has a warehouse. So we're not taking any entitlement away. It was just more of a catch that we thought, oh, well, probably doesn't make sense. Also, a lot of times when we have this big warehouse distribution, a lot of, a lot of them have outdoor storage. Sometimes that outdoor storage just gets unsightly. They're either storing a bunch of stuff up or they're not maintaining it. So we really beefed up our outdoor storage requirements, more with the landscaping around it and fencing requirements, just more of screening of outdoor storage.
Can I ask on that outdoor storage? Is there clarification around the outdoor storage of vehicles versus other materials?
So it depends on how we're using it. For instance, if it's a car dealership, they would fall under their own use of car dealership. I'm trying to think of an example. We have outdoor storage where people have parking lots, but that would be defined as more of, you know, a parking lot associated with their business. RV storage also falls under a different category, not outdoor storage, just more mini-storage.
So we did have one case here that was the landscape-to-vehicle park, vehicle to parking, which was considered outdoor storage.
Okay.
And there was no clarification that that would be more like a parking lot versus an outdoor storage space.
Can you think of what that one was?
It was basically, it was a, a landscape business that had an outdoor yard area that they were storing equipment and vehicles in. So it would be outdoor storage essentially ancillary to the primary use.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't know that I have a clear answer on that. We might have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. Because we do have a separate category for landscape maintenance and repairs business.
And, and that case, as I recall, was there, it might have just been purely outdoor storage that their office was offsite. So which case it would just fall under general outdoor storage.
We also, this is funny. So we have a category if your primary use is outdoor storage. We have another group of categories if your accessory use is outdoor storage. So different requirements depending on how it's classified. We've over-analyzed so many things in this code. All right. Commercial uses, big things, we talked about this with planning commission, tattoo parlors. Do we want them as a separate category or do we want to lump them in with general personal service? And so we took your feedback, took it to council, they agreed, we should lump it in with general personal service. We allow general personal service in a lot more areas. That is things like hair salon, getting your nails done, laundromat. So tattoo parlor is now lumped in with general personal service. Car washes, we have expanded now to allow car washes in our neighborhood commercial zoning, but with a conditional use permit. Again, our concern is to make sure if you're next to residential, that we're mitigating those impacts. And then drive-throughs, we have really kind of changed the way we look at drive-throughs. Prior to COVID, we were anti-drive-through as a city. Part of that was we were trying to encourage people to walk and bike and not rely on their cars. And then COVID hit and we actually needed drive-throughs. Many businesses survived because of drive-throughs. People probably survived because of drive-throughs where they may have otherwise caught in COVID. So I think over time, we, we've looked at drive-throughs a little differently. We are very limited in our zoning code on where we allow drive-throughs, especially in our main corridors. And so we've expanded now to allowing them in more areas, but with a conditional use permit. One thing we don't want, for instance, is like a, a Dutch Bros going in or a In-N-Out Burger, right? Super intense drive-throughs without us having the ability to take a look at them and look at the impacts. And so we've beefed up now where we allow them, but still with a public review process. Schools. We had quite a few discussions, both with planning commission and at the council level, on how we want to address schools. Number one is we went back and we looked at Sparks and Washoe County. Were all three jurisdictions supposed to have generally the same regulations for schools? That makes sense because the school district, there's only one school district for this whole region and yet we have three jurisdictions. It sure would help them if we all had the same set of rules. So we went back and we cleaned that up. And then we combined a category. We had defined primary schools, meaning kindergarten through eighth grade, and secondary schools, which is high school. And so again, that didn't match with the county in Sparks are doing. It kind of created more conflicts. So now we just call them schools. We're not, not looking so much if it's primary or secondary, just schools in general. And then we've added additional requirements so that anytime a school comes in, whether it's a public school, private school, charter school, we have language that says, here's some key things that we want to look at across the board, all schools. And it's the things that we're dealing with with all these new schools, right? It's the cars being, doing the drop-off and pickup, where are people waiting? Where are the school flashers? Where are the crosswalks? So all of that is now first and foremost of, hey, if you're doing a school, know that we're going to ask for these things. Now, one additional thing that came out of council that had not been before you guys is council does want us to see that schools that have more than a certain number of kids will have to go through a conditional use permit. The way our zoning code is now is that most schools in general, we don't look at the stu- the school capacity, they trigger a minor conditional use permit. So that never comes before planning commission, does not go through a public hearing. Staff reviews it. We do send public notice postcards so the public can comment, but there's no formal meeting like this. They don't have to go to the NAB. So with city council direction, they've asked us to put a threshold and anything over that threshold would have to go through a conditional use permit. So anything, a, a new school coming in with more than 400 kids, which for the most part is all of our Washoe County schools, they will trigger a conditional use permit. A, a lot of our smaller schools, like the charter schools, some of them are over 400, some of them are not. And so the smaller ones, especially the ones associated with like churches, they would not trigger a conditional use permit. They would still trigger a minor conditional use permit. So that still does require that we review it, we can condition it, and we do send public postcards out, but anything more than 400 school students moving forward would trigger a public review process.
Hey, Angela?
Yeah.
Sorry. I did want to say that I know the sentiment with the other municipalities recently, Sparks and County. They're applauding City of Reno for, for this in particular, as of recent. There is conversation there at the regional level and so y'all are the trailblazers on this front. Was 400 just like taken as an average? Just curious how, how y'all arrived at that particular number.
We looked at traffic and we said, what would trigger a traffic study? And it's, um, traffic is different for elementary, middle and high school. So we looked at the, the number of students that would trigger it and it was somewhere between 350 and 450, depending on again, what school type you're talking about. So we kind of met in the middle and said 400.
Okay. Cause at regional, that, that's been the $64,000 question of that threshold?
Yes. We've had lots of discussions with regional.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
We're all on the same page. Not sure all the governing board members are. They may change that number
Right.
for what triggers a project of regional significance. Yeah.
Is Washoe County School District's waived fees for special use permits? Or is this now going to be?
No. So they, right now, all of their schools right now trigger a minor conditional use permit. So they are used to going through that process. They also have been great, at least in the past, probably eight months or so. They volunteer to go to the NAB. That hasn't always been the case. They're not required to. At a minor conditional use permit, you're not required to go to the NAB. But again, I think they're in support of definitely reaching out to the community. So we've had quite a few discussions with them. I think some of their bigger concerns are not so much the new schools, but through their modernization plan, their existing schools that they are upgrading. A lot of their schools, they're keeping but expanding. And so we had a lot of discussions from, from their perspective, what would trigger a conditional use permit for these schools that are expanding.
And what, what's the answer to that?
So that is not even related to this, just our standard code. If you expand by more than 20% or 20,000 square feet, it would trigger a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause I know like Bond Middle School, for instance, they're redoing it and are they expanding?
And that was a complete teardown and rebuild of a three-story school. So they, they're already through that process. They went through a minor conditional use permit. So it did not require a public hearing. And we've gotten a lot of pushback from the neighbors. And I think part of it is many of them felt like, yes, I've always lived next to a school. I knew about that. But now it's a three-story school. And so when you live next door to a three-story school and you're used to a one-story school, you, I think, feel like, maybe I wanted to be involved in this and maybe I didn't get the public notice postcard or didn't see the big sign posted. So again, I think this process could help to engage some of the community when we start seeing these big changes.
Yeah.
Okay. Sustainable development. This is one that several members of our council have asked us to do what we can from a zoning code perspective to make things more sustainable. There's not a whole lot we can do, I will say, from the zoning perspective, but we tried to pick up a couple of things here and there. One of them is from a basic perspective, within our landscape requirements, we had a couple of different zoning districts where we didn't require trees or landscaping, like public facility, for instance. We didn't have a landscape requirement. Silly. So we, I think that was just an oversight. So we've added public facility to now require 20% site landscaping. And then with our new screening standards, and that was that table where we talked about, it used to be based on what your zoning district was and now it's based on what your use is. So two uses next to each other, we require screening. We've increased the tree spacing. So it used to be every 30 feet, you have to plant a tree. We talked to the landscape community and we said, can we, can we reduce that to allow for more trees? And a lot of the discussion was, yes, you can definitely do that, but you have to make sure that you're planting them far apart enough where they can still grow. So instead of every 30 feet planting a tree, we kind of all settled on 20 feet. And so again, we'll be able to get more trees and for every tree you plant, you have to have six shrubs. So generally, we're going to get more landscaping through those screening standards. Another one inadvertently, our, when our code update was done in 2021, we took out a requirement that said you have to pave your parking lot. Can you imagine? It'd be like the Wild West, just a bunch of dirt parking lots. So that was an oops, that was an oversight. So we're putting that information back in the code. Yes, you must pave your parking lot. No, we don't want gravel parking lots anywhere. And then a big one that we've been working on with Tamwa and the health department is anytime we have irrigation right next to a street and it sprays onto the street or the wind's blowing and the water goes onto the street, it really degrades that street way faster than it needs to and it's a waste of water. So we have a requirement now that no irrigation, like spray irrigation, within 18 inches of a public right-of-way. Yep, you can still have drip irrigation, but we don't want to see that spray within 18 inches of the public right-of-way. And we have been, like I said, we did coordinate with Tamwa and they were definitely in support and excited to see this. Other things that we're doing within our requirements for a traffic impact analysis. So typically, when you think of, oh, I have to submit a traffic report, it's going to show how much cars are coming and how, what the impacts are. Now we're asking for additional information on multimodal. So that's everything from how are people biking to the site and how are people safely walking to the site? So we've expanded it to look at not just cars when we do a traffic report, but now also to look at that full multimodal perspective. And then that last one has to do with solar. We've had a lot of interest, I think, from, from many of this group and other groups that, why don't we do more to require solar or incentivize solar? We, we, we weren't able to get to a good space in requiring solar. I think there was too much pushback from the community. And so we still wanted to say, well, what can we do to be more proactive and incentivize? So we looked at other codes and again, there's, there's not much that we're finding that's really helpful from a zoning perspective, but we've seen some jurisdictions that allow for reduced parking. But we've seen some jurisdictions that allow for reduced parking in exchange for solar. And whether that's a solar panel or full-on solar parking structures. And I think from the reality perspective, one of the pushbacks we get from a solar parking structure is that it makes it tough to meet your parking requirements because you have these big columns, as you can see even in that picture. The big columns kind of help, well, they break up where you can fit cars. And so we thought, even better, let's reduce the parking, and we reduced it by 5%, so it's not like a huge parking reduction. But our hope is that we can get more businesses to want to do solar parking, and that means you can do less parking requirements.
Angela, this is great. Is this just for commercial, or is it residential, or across the board? Fantastic.
And 5% on residential isn't much. I mean, I'm hoping that we would see it in the multifamily where you have more parking requirements. You wouldn't see it, you know, in a duplex or a single family, but definitely in where you see these bigger parking lots, we're hopefully trying to incentivize it.
And it doesn't have to be like this. It could be, you said rooftop, or however, whatever they.
Yep.
Were there any considerations for removing that CUP on warehousing in exchange for solar?
Internally, we talked about it. I don't, our concern was that that didn't address Councilwoman Ebert's concerns. And because she's in Word 4, where we're seeing a ton of industrial development, while it helps to have solar, like I said, it doesn't address the issues of 24-hour use and lights and traffic, which is what she's getting a lot of complaints about. Okay, wild horse protection. So this is something we were working with the horse advocate groups, and they helped us to come up with some language. Nothing really over the top on this, just cleaning it up. We now define where that Virginia range is, and that matches where the Department of Wildlife defines this wild horse Virginia range. Just again, to make our code consistent with Department of Wildlife. And then we looked at how we can better do the fencing. So one of the complaints we got from the wild horse advocate group is that a lot of times horses will get out of these fenced areas, and it's very tough, once they catch the horse, it's tough to get them back in. A lot of times, you know, horses sneak out. We don't know how they get out, so you go back to the gate where you think they came out, and the gate's locked. So they, we have a new requirement that you have to put in, kind of these, I'd call them more like emergency gates, but they're not in your typical place where you would think the gate was. They're more spread out. There's some dimensions, 10 feet wide. And again, our intent is for these wild horses that get out, we don't know how they get out, then the wild horse advocate groups will be able to get them safely back in. We also have requirements now that you have flagging on any kind of wire fencing, flagging so that both horses and the humans can see where the wire fencing is, because a lot of times it's hard to see. So a lot of small things like that. And again, this came directly from the wild horse group. We didn't come up with that on ourselves. This is really something unique, and you have to know what you're doing, and so those wild horse advocates were super helpful at coming up with that language.
Question on that one, Angela. We've had the horse advocates and just this topic before us for, at least since I've been here, a year and a half. With these changes, do you feel like we will see less of those concerns, or maybe no more concerns that we've seen in the last year and a half, or is this just a good step in the right direction?
I think this is a small step to address the horse issue.
Okay.
I think there's other things that, from a zoning perspective, we're not, we can't be a part of. You know, there's concerns about, as development keeps happening, we're cutting off water, just natural water sources to a lot of these horses. Again, from a zoning perspective, not addressing that. So I think they're going to continue those types of discussions.
Okay.
So bigger picture, council has also asked that we put together a mitigation plan. So we'll be working with the same group to see what we can come up with on that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and then I just wanted to give you guys a couple examples of some of the crazy things in our code that I, like I said, some of these things have been in here for decades, and the staff are like, I don't, why, why, why does it say that? So these are some of the things that I just want you to understand why there's so many changes. From a zoning administrator perspective, we like to clean these things up. So just as an example, we have a section in our code that talks about if you're doing a public park. And it says, okay, so if you're, oh. So if you, you're building a new public park and you're in any zoning district except for the PGOS, which is that Parks, Greenways, and Open Space, okay, great, that makes sense. So it says, you know, your lights have to be shielded. Got it? That's just a standard anyway. You have to screen any parking or courts. If you're adjacent to residential zoning, great, we already have that kind of screening standard anyway. And then it says, if you have lights in your parking lot greater than three feet in height, you trigger a site plan review. I mean, I can't even think of a parking lot with lights that are three feet. I just, I can't think of any parking lot I've ever seen with lights that are three feet in height. So this, to me, is just like stupid. Why don't we just say, all lights will trigger a site plan review? But then again, like this is a parking lot. Why, why just having a parking lot with lights trigger a site plan review? So that whole concept to me just seemed crazy and a big waste of time, and really a hidden Easter egg. Because again, who actually reads line C and says, oh, okay, I trigger a site plan review because I'm putting lights taller than three feet in my parking lot? So we deleted item C because that just didn't make sense. Another fun one. So this has to do with our setbacks. So when you're looking at our single-family zoning, we have setbacks on how far your front of your house has to be from the property line, and your side, and your rear. So this one is specific to your rear yard setback. So how far your house has to be from your back property line. So the rear yard for each parcel may be 10 feet. If one side of the yard is at least 20 feet wide and contains a minimum of 400 square feet of a maximum slope of seven to one, basically of land. So we read that, we're like, okay, so my rear setback can be 10 feet, but only if my yard or my neighbor's yard has a sides of 20 feet wide, but only if it's 400 square feet of space, but only if it's sloped with a maximum of seven to one. I don't even know what seven to one looks like. That seems like pretty steep, but I don't know. So my point is, like, this is really hard to administer. I don't know what the intent was here, so we cleaned that up. One more. Okay, so now we're on our side setback requirement. So within the rear setback and the larger of the front setback, or 15 feet from any property line. So just that, that sentence itself, I don't know what that means. My rear setback and the larger of my front setback, or 15 feet from my property line, any portion of my building that exceeds 12 feet in height has to have an additional one foot of side yard for every, not foot, over 12 feet height. So again, we, staff, we looked at that, and we're like, I don't, I got nothing. Am I changing my side setback, or my rear setback, or my front setback? What is this impact? So this is the kind of language that we, we just go in circles, trying to figure out, what does that mean? How do we interpret that? So we said, let's take that kind of stuff out. None of us understand. We get the intent is probably, you know, to have that step back, but the way it's written, I got nothing. Doesn't make any sense.
So was the language entirely removed, or was it just fadest, so it's kind of more in layman's terms?
It was deleted. It was buried, and yeah. Now, we didn't, we didn't make it completely go away in the fact that we still have that side setback. We call it that step back. So any portion of your building taller than 24 feet, meaning more than two stories, you have to step back, anything above that.
So you're really just falling back on other clear language or tables somewhere else?
Yeah.
This is all just noise and confusing.
Very confusing. Okay, so again, big thing, since we talked to you back in February, March, when we met with you and kind of went through all these changes. Again, just as a reminder, we did remove anything related to tree protection because we've given direction to pull it out and do that separately. Anything tied to signs, we pulled out. We're doing a separate sign text amendment. We had, as a group, talked about excess parking. I think you had brought this one up. We initially proposed, we had a requirement that if you provide more parking than our code allows, we kind of penalize you by making you add extra landscaping. So we're keeping that. And the way it's worded is that if you have more than 150% of the required parking, so again, a lot of math there, because you have to first figure out how many parking spaces are required, more than 150% of that, you have to provide additional landscaping. And it's based on 10 square feet of landscaping for every parking space above and beyond that 150%. So this really impacts your bigger parking lots. You typically wouldn't see this on a small parking lot, but let's say you have a big shopping center and they have a ton of parking. This would require, now that they have more landscaping. So we kept that language in. Again, because we just generally don't get a lot of big parking lots these days, but if we ever get another big shopping mall, this is where it would come into play.
Well, and I guess if there is concern with that, with the solar now included, maybe there's a way to tie that in somehow, so you're not. I never felt as though the adding of the trees was penalizing, but this could be a way to, I guess, if they really need that, then they can add the solar and not have to do the additional, but something to think about.
And definitely too, you know, I think one of our biggest urban heat island challenge areas is the airport, right? Because it's just, it's a bunch of just flat concrete. And so this is kind of a great example of, if we have these big parking lots, it does help to have trees and landscaping. So from that perspective, I think it definitely helps to bring down that heat effect and just, again, make us a better, more green community. So not necessarily a bad thing. I think I probably made it sound like it was a bad thing, but it's not a bad thing, but we did keep that. Okay, and then I just have one change from the red line that went out. Initially, we had removed everything in this kind of two, A, B, C, D, and it's related to gaming. So there's some language that says, basically, when you have a gaming establishment come in, and this is for things that restricted gaming, so uses with 16 or fewer slot machines, we have some requirements. And you have to have, say you have two businesses next to each other. Maybe you have, I don't know, a grocery store with slot machines, and next door you have a bar with slot machines. So this regulation identifies, well, they have to be separated by a solid wall, and you guys can't share bathrooms and kitchens. And so from a zoning perspective, we were like, why does zoning regulate that? That should be something the gaming control board regulates. But we had some comment from the gaming community, and they said, whoa, 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 this is actually a good thing. They do this down in Southern Nevada, and so we were just unaware that this is actually a worthwhile thing to have. So staff had initially recommended that we take this out. We are now recommending that we leave it in, not proposing to make any changes to the wording, just leave it in as code as it is written today. So that is the only change that I have from the red line version that's in front of you. But I wanted to open it up to any other questions that you guys have. This is technically the opportunity for Planning Commission to make recommendations to council that are formal recommendations. You can choose to approve, deny, or modify anything, and we'll take that to City Council for a first reading.
Great. Well, thanks as always. Really appreciate all of your presentations and all of the hard work that's gone into this. I'm glad we actually get to formally make a motion on this tonight. Does the commission have any questions or comments for Angela before we move into the discussion or motion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Veltoven.
I just wanted to address one of the concerns that was raised by during public comment. Tyler asked about the cabaret license, and I know this has come up a lot, and I also understand we're very far along in this process. Is that something that's going to be addressed or can be addressed by council?
So I will add some background to this. Back in 2021, we were just coming out of COVID, and we had a lot of bars that were coming back with DJ trivia. That really was like the start of it all. And we considered DJ trivia to be live entertainment. And our zoning code did not allow live entertainment at places that were zoned, like a Bullies, or, you know, one of these neighborhood commercial bars. And so DJ trivia was like, man, you guys have to do something to allow me to do DJ trivia. And so we said, that's a good point. Like, we should look at live entertainment as a bigger picture. So we did a complete zoning code update specific to live entertainment. And now we allow live entertainment everywhere. Every single zoning district allows it, but we have rules. And so you can have live entertainment inside up until, I think, 11:00 PM. So if you want to have DJ trivia at your bar or at your restaurant, you can do that now by right. No entitlement, straight to, you know, you can just do it. You do have to get a business license and everything, a cabaret license, to do any kind of live entertainment. From a zoning perspective, though, we said, as long as you're doing it indoors, up until 11 o'clock, you can do it by right. For any business after 11 that wants live entertainment, we're going to condition a, require a conditional use permit. Now, that did go to Planning Commission, did go to council. We had a lot of discussions with council about the downtown area in particular. And we said, should this be relevant to downtown, right, where we have 24-hour towns and so, or 24-hour businesses? And the answer was yes. They wanted live entertainment to have to go through a conditional use permit. That does not limit your ability to have a bar or a restaurant or any other business 24 hours a day. So this is specific to the hours of the live entertainment component, and I think that's one thing that maybe a lot of businesses are not understanding. If you can do a 24-hour business, great, we're not limiting that. But if you want live entertainment anywhere in the city, after 11 o'clock at night, it's a conditional use permit. So any business that's been operating, they have a cabaret license, let's say they've been in operation for 20 years, no, we're not coming after you, right? As long as we can prove that we have some kind of documentation that said you were doing live entertainment. And so we go back and we look at the history of when we gave you a business license. If we have anything in our notes from the last, you know, however long you've been in business that says, yep, we've approved you for live entertainment, and you are grandfathered in, we're not going to take that right away from you. Just like, you know, our zoning code changes all the time. We don't make you close your business if now your use is not allowed in that zoning district. This is no different. If you can show that you were approved through the city for live entertainment, you maintain that forever. So any new business that comes in has to follow today's rules, and that's across the board. Doesn't matter if it's live entertainment or anything else. Any new business follows today's rules. So if you're a bar, and you want to operate 24 hours a day in downtown, you can do that because we allow that. But if you want to add that live entertainment, singing, dancing, karaoke, musicians, that would be live entertainment. Anything past 11 o'clock requires a conditional use permit.
I have a question about that, just to clarify, or for my clarification. The individual that spoke earlier, it seemed he was concerned that there was, obviously, different entities had different entitlements. In the example you just gave, there was a period of time where there was no live entertainment. Was it possible during that era where someone came forward and received an entitlement to have live entertainment past 11? Okay, so is it possible that some of these examples that were shared over public comment, some of businesses, maybe during that early era, early era, received an entitlement for maybe to go till 1:00 AM?
Yes.
So there may, and I don't know the specifics he was talking about exactly, but is it possible that maybe some of the confusion is resulting from prior entitlements, even during an era before live entertainment? Okay, thank you.
And so what we have done is, we now have a spreadsheet that is, we started out with just the downtown area, and we pulled up every entitlement that we've done that's related to live entertainment, so that we can better track it with our code enforcement team. And then we said, well, let's also go beyond that. So for instance, West Second Street, it's a karaoke bar. It's been in place for probably 25 years. So they've been doing live entertainment for many, many years. They don't have a conditional use permit, but they've been there with the same operator, same license for a long time. So we went back, we found notes from 2017 that said, we approved them for live entertainment. And so we said, okay, we will honor that. We had some conditions tied to that. And again, it wasn't clean by any chance because it's written in a note of a business license. It's not a conditional use permit. But we are honoring all of those agreements. So we're pulling up all the licenses that we have in town, and we're doing the research to figure out, did we ever approve it that that business could have live entertainment? Now, that would be tied to that business owner, where a conditional use permit is tied to the land. So that's the difference too. So Tyler, who was just on the phone, so he's had a, he's had a bar, it's the Emerson, and he's owned it for quite some time. He did not have to go through a conditional use permit because we found notes in the system that when we gave him his license, we gave him the right to have live entertainment, I want to say, till 1:00. So he has, he's grandfathered in, that his, as long as he has that license, he can follow those rules. If he ever leaves and a new bar comes in, that new bar, if they want to do live entertainment, they would trigger going through a conditional use permit. So we're trying to kind of catch up on the history of what we did over the last 20 years. It's a lot of research, and again, we just. And again, we just haven't been consistent because our rules have changed so much over the years. But our hope is that anytime we get a phone call from a bar owner, they can say, hey, what do you have on me, right? Do I have a conditional use permit? What did I, well, you know, what was I approved for five years ago when I opened it, I don't remember. So from this perspective, we're not proposing any changes to live entertainment. All of that was done through that separate text amendment. At this point, council has not given us direction to make any changes. I think part of it's on our end, we just need to better educate the business community on what they are entitled to or what rights they have.
Do you have a follow-up?
I do. Applaud you and Lauren and your team for this work. I know it might seem like many years and dog years, but just to remind us.
Plan our years, like thirty.
It was a three, give or take? Okay, because that does tee me up for the question. It's kind of a broader, more strategic question of change management for this type of document. I don't think you probably want to go through another three years every time you might want to make a needed adjustment on a chapter or a section. Is there a plan to allow or empower staff to make minor changes, you know, in a transparent way and so forth, akin to what we would do with minor site reviews, site plan reviews, right? Where administratively, you're like, yeah, this no longer makes sense, let's just change this. And we'll bubble it up to Planning Commission as an FYI, like this change was made. And for larger changes, we'll maybe go through a more formal process, like a major site plan review akin to that, right? Is there going to be something like that or no? Okay.
There is not. We do have, we've added some language called a Scrivener's error. So if we catch that, maybe there's a reference that was wrong or, you know, something that was inadvertently left out, we can make that change, but truly, any change needs to go through that public process.
Right, and not trying to skirt that, just trying to find a way to where we can streamline processes without compromising the public review process. So then my next question would be, what would trigger another review? Is it just a matter of someone ten years from now, Carrie saying, you know what, let's go through that again? Or is it like, is it arbitrary or is there something specifically that triggers this review process?
Council has to initiate a change to our zoning code. So if we have, like for instance, they've initiated us to update our sign code, to create an ADU ordinance, to update our telecommunications ordinance. So there's a handful of things that are in process now that they've already given us direction to update. And I think the reality is we know there's always going to be a need for change. So we'll just keep making a list and we'll probably come back in a year and ask council like, hey, we've got this long list of things, will you initiate another change? But I, but there's always going to be one offs. And that's what we found in this code is because it's so old and it's just been revamped over and over and over again. The things that we find were like, oh, my gosh, that was crazy that they wrote that twenty years ago and we're still dealing with it. So we'll continue to clean it up. But ultimately, I would love to hire a consultant to delete it and start over, but I don't know that that's in the, in the plans anytime soon.
Okay, so then my last question there is, do you feel like staff in the city of Reno are in a better position now with these changes than we were three years ago? For moving forward and what's ahead of us? Or are there areas that you felt we could still discuss tonight that you'd like to kind of bounce back and forth?
No, I think, again, from the changes that are proposed, these aren't major changes. And so this, from our mind, is kind of a clean, easy fix because there are things that we said, like the examples I shown of, does anyone understand what that means? If we can get rid of those things, it makes our lives easier. And it also makes the people that actually review it, you know, the architects and the engineers and the planners, if they don't know what it means, they're just as frustrated as we are and the general public too. I mean, if, as a general public, trying to read a zoning code, it's so confusing. So the, you know, the more we can do just to make it easier for all of us, the better. So this is a good first step.
Thanks, Angela. Thanks, Lauren. I'm ready to support a motion or whatever this body wants to do.
Sure thing, we don't have any additional.
But it's not tied to this, I'm good with this. I just had a question about something that was said earlier, so we can either approve this and then I can ask my question after.
Might as well just ask the question now before we vote.
Okay, it's with regard to the data centers. I just, you mentioned that, that would likely, when you guys go, I know it's Tabula Rasa right now and you guys don't have, it's a blank slate. And there's really nothing in place. But the general, or sorry, yeah, the general commercial, it only, I looked at the master plan and there's only one, there's only one land use under the master plan where it would fit, and that would be suburban mixed use. It does not, there's no general commercial under industrial or mixed employment.
Are you looking at the master plan or the zoning code?
Yeah.
Yeah, so from a master plan perspective, we don't dictate uses, we dictate zoning districts.
Okay, but the, yeah, exactly. But why, I guess my question is, why would we do a general commercial that doesn't fit under the master plan industrial framework?
Yeah, let me pull up where we are proposing with zoning districts. Hold on just a minute. Oh, there we go. Okay, so, so this MDID, which is our mixed use downtown innovation district, which is where we allow a lot of industrial type uses.
You're looking at the development code?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, can I do a share, let's put it on this one.
And did you say MDID?
Yes. So that MDID, it's kind of an old part of downtown Reno, more like in the Sixth Street area, where it allows a lot of industrial type uses. So we looked at what is a data center comparable to? And again, more of whether it's a warehouse or whether it's more internal, inside processing. And so we aligned our uses with that. So we've got the MDID, which is that, again, more the innovation district. And we have our mixed use. And most of our mixed use is on our corridors such as Fourth Street or Virginia Street. MS, we have a lot of MS in like the North Valleys, for instance. General Commercial, we allow a lot of industrial type uses within that general commercial zoning. And then we have four different actual employment or industrial type uses where we're also looking at data centers.
Of those that you just named, I don't see any of them fit under industrial or mixed employment. It's all going to be under, under the master plan, that is, under suburban mixed use or one of the others. And I guess it's because you guys just don't envision that that's an industrial type.
So are we talking master plan?
Yes, so you're looking at the development code.
Yes.
But the development code has to align, right, am I understanding this, with the master plan? The master plan highlights a variety, and I'm looking at it right now, highlights conforming districts.
Zoning districts.
Exactly, which is the development code, districts. Master plan, districts fall under certain, right? So when you, we look under industrial and we look under mixed employment, I see industrial, I see industrial, commercial, I see mixed use, airport, mixed employment, parks, greenways, and open spaces, public facilities, and on and on. I don't see any of the ones that you just described. And I guess my question is, is that because just the city or staff or whomever, I'm not sure, powers that be, don't envision data centers as industrial?
We, they're, they're different than industrial in that they aren't the same level of noise. A lot of times with industrial uses, we have people outside hammering, making noise. They also generally will generate less traffic than a lot of these big warehouses. So from that perspective, you may see, we've had interest in some of these smaller data centers that would go into even like a core, not a downtown, but in your core kind of inner city area. In other cities is where they're going. So they, they're functioning a lot of times more like an office. So from that perspective, we need to look at them case by case. But where we would see them typically, that mixed use, MU zoning, MS zoning, general commercial zoning, that is where we allow a lot of the warehousing, the big office complexes, more of those types of uses.
Okay, I guess, that makes sense, that makes sense. I just, I'm envisioning current data centers that exist, and I'm not going to say any names because I don't want, I don't want to get, go there. But, and in my mind, those are more industrial. You're looking at the lights, you're looking at the large buildings, it's a giant, it's basically a giant building. So this is for the future. I just wanted to kind of get some insight into what that was potentially going to look like because I think it's important because I don't know, I don't know exactly kind of what that would look like because I, I think we have different visions of what a data center is. And I don't know if I'd want a data center in my backyard, whereas I don't mind a dental office in my backyard or a law firm or whatever. But thank you, I appreciate the answer and kind of all the work you've done here.
And I think you'll probably get a good explanation when that, the data center that's coming before Planning Commission here shortly, they can give you a better example of what theirs would look like. Because I, when we first talked about data centers as staff, we also envisioned the same one that you're envisioning, more of a prison type looking facility with bright lights and fencing, security fencing. But again, in talking to a handful of different ones, the ones that they're building don't resemble that same one. But we want to look at it case by case because we don't want, if we are getting what we're envisioning, then we are going to condition it differently and maybe even deny it based on the location. But if it truly does look more like an office complex and there's not much traffic, because there's not many employees, there's no industrial traffic, then it really is a pretty low intensive use.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. Do you think these data centers might have their own conditions? I mean, some findings specific to data centers because of the amount of energy they're drawing, the amount of substation infrastructure, some of these other ancillary?
We thought about that too. The challenge we have is from a zoning perspective, that's not necessarily our lane. They, they can't go places unless they have, whether it's water or energy from, you know, a substation. And so from a zoning perspective, we can't control that. And they pretty much tell us, this is where I want to go and here's why. And we look at it and say, okay, what are the impacts, right? It's noise, it's traffic, it's lights. So how do we address that from a zoning perspective? So those are the kind of things that we looked at. And we'll see it as they come in. The good thing is we can condition them case by case. So if we do find things like, oh, each one really has the same issue and over and over, as we update the code over time, we can make it as just standard requirement rather than a conditional use permit. Yeah.
Looking forward to that one.
Do you have additional questions? You do not? Okay. Our commissioners on Zoom, do you have any additional questions before I bring it back?
No, thank you.
Sure thing, hearing none, entertain a motion.
Oh, can somebody put it back up? Sorry. I make a motion to approve, I'd say, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance with the edit to section eighteen oh three, four oh five, H two, as discussed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for your hard work. So before opening item six, I'm going to just float the idea of maybe continuing this to the next meeting. Is that possible? Just because it's getting late.
It is, yeah, absolutely. I'm trying to, what, do we have a busy agenda?
We do have a fairly full agenda for our next meeting. I think we were at five items for next.
How about the eighteenth?
I don't know that we have a quorum for the eighteenth.
We do.
We do.
We, that was one of my announces, we do have a quorum for all of our upcoming meetings, so.
Actually, I'm going to have to back out of the fourth. Would that upset our quorum?
Especially the fifth.
The fifth, yeah, I'm not going to be able to make that one.
I think we're still good, but I will reconfirm with Michelle.
We can look at the agenda and bump it to a future, the training for a future December meeting based on how long the agenda looks.
How long is the training? If it's fifteen minutes, I could probably.
Yeah, I could do it if it's fifteen.
Yeah, it's not long.
Okay, let's do it.
Some quick jumping jacks?
So I will now open item six, training on the importance of land use findings.
Okay, so we kind of wanted to go back to a couple of things of, what is the role of staff versus Planning Commission versus City Council? And I found this great little cartoon, which I thought, oh, it's so perfect. So Planning Commissions are the policy advisors. Council are the ones that actually make the policy. And then staff has to administer that policy. So we all have very different roles in this. That's the fun part about, you know, working as planning commissioners. You guys give us, give us your input, you make recommendations, you approve and deny projects. When it comes to big policy decisions, council's the one that gets to make those decisions. At the end of the day, staff just follows the rules that are adopted. So generally speaking, whether you're dealing with an entitlement or a business, we all follow the exact same process for everything we do. We get calls all day long about, hey, can I open a business here? First question is always, well, what's your property zoned? Here's my zoning. Well, is that use allowed? Yes or no? Okay, great, so we know the use is allowed. And then we get into the detail in terms of, have you designed your project to meet all the rules? And we have so many different codes and regulations, just high level, the ones that you guys probably see more than not is zoning code, obviously. From a building code perspective, we want to make sure structurally it sounds, and we have all kinds of regulations on that. Fire code, fire plays a huge role in review of what the building is structured to look like, how the site is designed to make sure fire trucks can get around it. And then our Public Works Design Manual, which is really more of the engineering side of things. They're designing roads, they're designing drainage ways and all that level of detail. So every project, whether it comes to you guys as a review or it goes to a building permit, follows that same general process. Now we get questions about, well, how come the master plan says this? How do you guys implement that? Or how about the regional plan? So here's just a couple other big policy documents that I wanted just to kind of highlight because these are things that we think about as we're reviewing projects. And while all of these documents are big picture, big policy, they don't say you shall do this. They say generally, you should do this, right? We should encourage infill. That doesn't mean we look at anything outside of infill and deny it. No, 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 like, again, from a policy perspective, things that we're trying to make the city better about. Same with sustainability. We don't have a lot of musts or shalls when it comes to sustainability, but we have things that we're constantly trying to do better. So again, it kind of ties into, while we don't require that people put up solar panels, what can we do to encourage it? So all those big picture, big policy things really weigh in when we're looking at really just development as a whole. Now, when you guys review something, you have a whole different set of things that you have to look at. And it all goes back to findings. Every one of your entitlements has a separate set of findings. And generally speaking, they all kind of are the same thing, right? Is it compatible? Does it follow the development standards? Meaning if the setback is ten, is it meeting ten? If the building height is thirty feet, is it meeting that? When it comes to public services and facilities, that is everything from, does it have access to sewer lines and water lines? Does the police have the ability to serve it? Does the city of Reno Fire Department have the ability to serve it? And just because a, a fire truck is not within eight minutes or six minutes, doesn't mean that we don't build these things. You know, our policy documents dictate, we're trying to make sure that we can get, for instance, when you call nine one one, trying to get a fire truck there within six minutes. But if we can't get a fire truck there within six minutes, it's really on the city to build more fire stations, we just don't have any money. But we have things in place that say, okay, if we can't serve you within six minutes, we're going to require that you put in fire sprinklers. So that goes back to, here's how we kind of mitigate the impacts. And then that final one, is it detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare? And that's probably our biggest one that we deal with is, how do you define that, right? It seems like something that's not black and white. So within each of our staff reports, it's the same template. Always starts out with the background and then we go into the analysis. And each of these kind of side points is really what goes back to the findings that we just looked at, whether it's a conditional use permit or a major site plan review or a major deviation. Generally, the findings fit and match each of these categories. So is it compatible with the surrounding uses? And we have questions about, well, why are you allowing industrial development next to residential development? Well, the zoning allows it. And there's things that we have to do to, again, address, mitigate the impacts and address to make it safe for that neighborhood. So just because we may not like the idea of industrial next to residential, our code allows it. And so from that perspective, we have to look at it and say, okay, we don't want to go against code, it's allowed. But how do we allow that development to happen in a way that's not going to negatively impact that surrounding neighborhood? And again, each of our staff reports follows the same template, so you can always kind of tie these things back to. so you can always kind of tie these things back to the findings. In terms of traffic, access, and circulation, every new development will trigger new traffic. That, that is a given. So the question is, have they mitigated their impacts? And so when a new development comes in, and you say, you know what? I think you're causing too much traffic. We go to that traffic report, and it says, here's your level of service. From a policy perspective, our master plan says, we're trying to maintain a policy level of service of D, right? If F is failing, we are just under that with a D. But that is our master plan policy that we then have to try and implement when we look at these, these traffic reports. Utilities and service, same thing, right? Have they shown how they're going to provide sewer lines? And they're gonna build water lines. It's not our job to build it, it's their job to design it. We review it, and then they spend the money to actually do it. All of our staff reports also go back to master plan conformance, where we list what policies we are in conformance with. The, the good and bad thing about our master plan, it's a very broad document, so you could probably find policies to support most projects, and find policies to go against all projects. But it's a policy document, so we outline the ones that either support or don't support when we're making our staff recommendation. And then we also include a, a section on public and stakeholder engagement, and that's just more of informational of, here's when I went to the NAB, here's generally the kind of feedback we're getting. One thing that, from, from a planning commissioner perspective, you guys are tasked with looking at the opinions of, of the community, as from the applicant, and, and trying to weigh in the pros and cons. So keep in mind, too, a lot of times, maybe one voice is heard at these meetings, where there may be a whole community of people that maybe don't agree with that one voice. And so we, we always have to be cognizant of, just because somebody's the loudest in the room, doesn't mean that they are the right person in the room. We also have to be cognizant of the one that maybe can't be as vocal. We had a, a young child come today and talk about, you know, feral cats, or cats that were behind the building, and I thought, well, what a great, like, community, you know, activism to get out there and kind of talk about what she was concerned about. So whether you're a loud voice or a not-loud voice, we really try and take into consideration everybody's opinion. But the big thing, too, is at the end of the day, we are responsible for tying it back to findings. And so just because 50 people come out and they don't like it, we can't just deny projects because people don't like it. It really goes back to the rights of a developer, the rights of a property owner. And if we can find a reason why it is not in conformance, then it's a reason to deny it. But just to say, you know what, a lot of the neighbors don't want it, so we're gonna recommend denial. Those are the kind of, of denials that get us into trouble. You always have to try and find a reason to tie it to a finding, not just based on emotion. From a public perspective, do we do enough, you know, to get the information out there? We do, I would say, go above and beyond, probably what most other jurisdictions do. We send out, as soon as an application comes in, we send out a courtesy notice postcard. So if you live within 750 feet or you own property, you get a postcard that says, here's a link if you want to go check out the information, here's what's being proposed, here's when it's scheduled for Planning Commission or the NAB, so the general public can, can call the planner and ask questions. And then we have the NAB. So we, at the City of Reno, have neighborhood advisory boards. Sparks has nothing, they have no type of advisory board. Washoe has citizen advisory board, or CABS. They do not review development projects. Our NABS do look at development projects. They don't vote to approve or deny, but they provide input. So again, Reno kind of has one extra step that a lot of the other jurisdictions don't have, because we have that NAB. And then we send out public notices and postcards, we post it in the RGJ. That's standard, that's more of a, a requirement from state law. The yellow signs is unique to Reno. Most of the jurisdictions don't require those big public notice signs. The benefit there is, maybe you don't live nearby, but it's an area that you work by, and so you wouldn't get a postcard. So these signs are helpful for people that are walking by or driving by to say, oh, something's going on, I'm gonna read about it. Again, what can we do to get the information out? And then, of course, anytime we write a staff report, any feedback we've heard, this is staff's opportunity to try and address the concerns. And I think, you know, Leah's case earlier tonight on the 7th Street. So there was a, a ton of, of comments from the public early on. A lot of changes were made to the site plan. Staff pushed back on a handful of things, and the applicant pushed back on a handful of things. And so we kind of met in the middle, and tried to come up with something that, maybe they didn't love, maybe we didn't love, but at the end of the day, we were okay with, right? We, we were comfortable approving something that met our code requirements. And so a lot of times, there is this give and take from the development community of, why don't you just let me do what I want? It meets code. And we say, well, it may meet code, but let's, here's all these concerns, and they're legitimate concerns, how can we work with you? So we try and do that as best we can, understanding that we can't make everybody happy. And again, we have to be able to tie it to, is, is this something that, if we add this condition, and the applicant's not willing to accept it, are they gonna come back after the fact and sue us and say, that came out of nowhere, that was arbitrary and capricious? So we have to keep that as staff in the back of our mind. And luckily, we have great lawyers who tell us, don't do that, and, and help us to kind of keep an eye on these things before we make too many mistakes. Did you have a question, Manny?
I did, Angela. It was on the first bullet, courtesy notice postcards. I remember, uh, folks, the general public requesting if renters could be included in that, because I think the notices were only going to.
Property owners.
Property owners.
Yep.
And so they're not always notified. Is, is that something that the city's willing to, to do, or can do, or?
Because it has a financial hit, because now we're paying to do more, that would have to go through City Council.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, that I asked, thank you.
Yep. Okay, and then at the end of the day, everything does go to Planning Commission if it requires your public review, and that gives you guys the opportunity to also listen to the public and add or modify any of those conditions of approval. So when we are looking at comments or feedback from the public, you know, you may be asking, I know Manny, you and I had kind of talked about this in some emails, you know, how, how does staff factor in all of the different input? And our, our first and foremost is, is there something we can do to redesign the site in a way that addresses their concerns? And if it's a question of, you know what, I'm proposing five stories, and the guy next door wants it to be two stories, like, that's a pretty significant change, probably not realistic if the zoning code allows it to be five stories. But if we say, hey, you know, Mr. Developer, are you willing to maybe plant some tall trees to help screen the neighbor? Are you willing to push back the, you know, second story of that building? So where the guy's bathroom is, he doesn't have your bedroom looking in his bathroom window. So we try and work through some of those things with the developer as best as we can. We also use that ability to add conditions of approval. We don't have that ability on building permits, we can't just randomly add things. But if it's an entitlement, and it goes through this review process, we can add additional things. So I think that's the other thing people don't understand. If it's a project that goes straight to a building permit, it's black and white. It either meets code or doesn't. We don't get to say, I kind of feel like you should add 10 trees just because I feel like it. We can't do that at a building permit. So when it comes to a public hearing, or anything that requires us to write a staff report with conditions of approval, it require, it enables us to add additional things to help mitigate those impacts. And then again, we have to make sure that whatever those conditions of approval are is really a logical link between what they're proposing and the impact. And I wanted to give an example. When we approve these big planned unit developments, you know, you've got 5,000 new homes, you've got two schools, you've got neighborhood commercial, a big development's being approved, we oftentimes will say, we also want you to build us a fire station. Or we want you to, you know, put in a library, not really, but. Things that we, in the past, have conditioned. And the applicant, we work with them to do these things. So the, and when you go back to the, the condition that we're imposing, is it equally, kind of fairly, being imposed? Or is a project with 100 units coming in, and we're requiring them to build a fire station? Like, that would be very inequitable, right? 100 new units, you also have to build us a fire station at a cost of 15 million. That, that would not go over, if we got sued, we would, we would lose in a heartbeat. But when we have these big developments, and we have a proportional kind of nexus between what they're doing, what that development's doing, and the impacts on the city, we have a lot more flexibility to say, hey, are you willing to set aside 200 units as affordable? Are you willing to help us finance a fire station? But unless it's a big project, we also have to be very careful about what we condition. We've had a couple of projects where council has added a condition to pay an affordable housing fee. We, as staff, cannot add that requirement. We can't just randomly say, you gotta pay a fee, and you gotta pay a fee. That would be illegal. Same with Planning Commission, you guys don't get to say, you pay a fee, and you pay a fee. Not okay. City Council, they can do that. If the applicant agrees to it, then it makes it okay. If they're being forced to do it, then we get in trouble. So, again, anytime we're dealing with a project, and you think, man, they're adding a bunch of traffic, why don't we make them fix a spaghetti bowl because they're adding all this traffic? No, 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 that's not proportional, we can't do that. So we, we, we do a lot of kind of that fine balance and that dance between, is this, you know, is this gonna get us into trouble? If we've required that they do this, or build this? But for the most part, our, our team is pretty good about kind of knowing what's, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. But that's something, again, when you guys are adding conditions, just be aware, there's things that, unless there's truly like a proportionate nexus, we're cautious about adding conditions where you're randomly making somebody pay for something, or build something that's outside of really how much development they're proposing.
Question on that. Sometimes we remove conditions, right? Like, tonight we did that. But it came before us, like, we didn't suggest to add it. Right? At some point, staff and maybe the, the applicant agreed to bring it before us, but then it changed course by the time it was presented to us. I guess what I'm asking is, is that, should we also be cognizant of those situations where we remove conditions, which maybe we shouldn't have?
Yeah, I mean, anytime we, staff adds a condition, there's probably a reason, and they can give you the reason why a condition was added. But again, if it was just a straight building permit, none of those conditions would have been added. So at the end of the day, if you remove all the conditions, it probably, you know, could have gone to a building permit without any of those. And I don't know that there's any major ramifications by you removing conditions. It could impact the, the development in terms of, well, maybe the neighbors wanted it, and you took it out. But it's not typically, not something that's gonna have a huge impact.
I guess, maybe what I'm asking, too, is that sometimes we are concerned about being sued by the developer, but should we be concerned about being sued by our fellow residents for removing conditions? Not the one tonight, but just randomly?
You could, and we, we get sued all the time. Reno is always in a lawsuit.
Oh, goodness.
One that we, I'm trying to think of, you guys reviewed it, the Life Church project. This is the one over by Demani High School. Did that come before Planning Commission, or was that?
Before my time.
It may have just been a, a staff review. So staff reviewed a project, wrote conditions of approval. I think it was just a, maybe a minor conditional use permit. And it was, a church down by Demani High School was expanding the school piece. They had an existing school that was part of the church, and they were expanding it to more square footage and more students. And so the neighbors came out and appealed it, and it went to City Council. And the neighbors' concerns, one of them was that the traffic's already too loud, and they wanted either the city or the church to put in rubberized road near them, because that would quiet the streets. And they also suggested maybe a big sound wall, kind of retaining wall, you know, in their backyard. And again, it goes back to, A, are any of those things that are truly linked to Life Church? Or are these just existing problems that you have, that you're dealing with, and you think that these things will be exasperated? So, council approved the project, there was some litigation back against the, the city and, and the, and the church. So we get sued all the time, based on all decisions we make. But again, every, everything's case by case, so you can't just say, I'm gonna remove this condition, and I'm afraid the neighbors are gonna sue me. It's, it really is, everything is unique. And everything at the end of the day that you guys do can be appealed to council. So ultimately, you are step one. The neighbors always have the chance to appeal it, and kind of plead their case with council as well. Okay. That's it.
Do we have any further questions? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone still on Zoom? Hearing none, I, I think we'll go ahead.
No questions. No question.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just saying, no questions, thank you.
Oh, okay, great. Well, with that, I think we'll close Item 6, and thank Angela so much for her time, as always.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Angela.
Always instructive, and we appreciate it. And now I'll move to Item 7, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. We have a few folks here that could do it.
I feel like you're best equipped, as the chair.
Go for it.
So the last, we, we've had two meetings focused really on the, the same things. This is kind of an administrative requirement, but we have the Natural Resource Plan, the Public Infrastructure Plan, and then these are ultimately kind of informing the broader Truckee Meadows Regional Plan update. And what we're doing is having a series of meetings, one in City of Reno, one in Washoe County, one in Sparks. Basically, to make sure every jurisdiction has a public hearing where folks can weigh in on the adoption of that plan. We have done City of Reno and Washoe County jurisdictions. And, forgive me, I can't remember the exact date, I think it's early December. We'll have the final meeting in Sparks, and we'll recommend approval to the Regional Planning Governance Board. So hopefully that, or, we may recommend approval, hopefully we'll recommend approval. The TMRPA folks have worked very hard to, to deliver that product. So that is the goings-on through the end of the year at TMRPA. So we'll close Item 7 and move to Item 8, Staff Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of quick announcements. Council updates the Bill of Vista Ranch PewDie Amendment and the Cavalry Chapel Zone Change, were both approved by City Council since our last meeting. And then, as I mentioned previously, it looks as if we will have a quorum for all of our scheduled upcoming meetings. If, if you do have a change, please let Kelly or Michelle know as soon as possible, that, that way we can let applicants know, for some reason, we will not be having a quorum at the meetings. And that's all I had.
Thank you. We'll close Item 8 and move to Item 9, Commissioners' Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Do we have any? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close Item 9, and open Item 10, Public Comment. Do we have anyone on Zoom wishing to speak under Public Comment?
We do have a hand raised on Zoom. Tyler Colton?
Great.
Tyler, please unmute, state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Tyler Colton, thank you. I stayed with you guys. So I appreciate you, uh, everybody who asked questions to Angela regarding Title 18 of Live Entertainment. Angela, she does great work, there's so much they're doing, and I appreciate that. But Angela spelled out clearly to you guys, they're having now to go through Midtown, Downtown, 4th Street, Brewery District, business by business, to figure out the hours in which those businesses initially created their hours? Because the Cavalry license isn't attached to hours, it's the business hours you initially signed your business plan with, or licensing with. So they're having to use manpower to figure that out, which then code, to enforce that, would need to go pull up a master list and say, oh, this business like mine can go till 1:00 p.m. Oh, this one can go 24 hours. Oh, this one can go till 2:00, which seems a little chaotic. Also, we are trying to grow Midtown, Downtown. We are trying to empower small businesses, and with the conditional use permit, this only adds an additional $5,000 cost that then goes to the neighborhood input to counsel another three-month process at the cost of $5,000 additionally to small businesses that potentially could not get approved. So once again, I'm really asking that you consider and go to council that we create entertainment zones, and maybe that is Downtown, Virginia Street corridor through Midtown, Brewery District to start. Because it is, is, it's just not adding up, you know? It's a lot of work for, and planning doesn't talk to business and doesn't talk to code. When code is out enforcing these live entertainment rules that, that, that planning had set, but code doesn't understand them. And in my, what I said to you previously, there is a business, and I'm not gonna mention the name, that I have the documentation, that they just went to business and planning. that I have the documentation that they just went to business and planning on Virginia Street. And they are opening a new bar with no need to get a conditional use permit because they're in a commercial zone on Virginia Street. So it is unclear in Title 18 for live entertainment, very unclear still. And I appreciate Angela, and I know they're working hard, but it is not clear. And I think you guys really need to address this and take it to council before this cleanup is done. Thank you again for letting me speak to you guys, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone in chambers wishing to speak under general public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to item 11, adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Have a nice night, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jasmine.